Welcome, everyone. Our meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 18th, 2023, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Mr. Midgar?
Here.
Mr. Pulaski?
Here.
Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Allen?
Here. Okay, let’s do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notices regarding hearings, comments, and closed session.
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV, on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of, sorry, a regular and closed-session meeting of April 24th, 2024?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. On to reports. Administrator Rogers.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. So regarding the Oxbow Lane construction project, the contractor for this project is currently completing general cleanup, repairs, and preparation for paving through Friday, May 10th. Paving operations will begin on Monday, May 13th, weather permitting. They expect to be finished, finish the project by the end of the day on Tuesday, May 14th. Again, the schedule is weather-dependent. PSA&amp;G is continuing work on its gas main replacement project that began last year on Morris Avenue between Ashwood Avenue and Bryant Parkway. Work is expected to continue for an additional two to three weeks during the day. Night work will be required for the intersection of Ashwood Avenue and Morris Avenue. Road closures and detours will be in effect during project work, and police will be on-site to direct traffic. After the work is complete, Union County will be paving this section of Morris Avenue as part of their 2024 paving program. Project dates will be shared on the city website and social media channels once finalized by the county. The deadline to register to vote in the June for its primary election is Tuesday, May 14th. On May 14th, the City Clerk’s office will remain open until 9:00 PM for voter registration. More information on voter registration, voting by mail ballots, early and in-person voting is available at cityofsummit.org. The annual Summit PAL pet show will be held on Saturday, May 11th, on the Village Green. Registration for the free event begins at 1:00 PM and judging begins at 1:30 PM. More details about the pet show, including an online competition, are available at summitcommunityprograms.com. And finally, the next Summit Free Market event is this Saturday, May 11th, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Municipal Transfer Station. More information is available at summitfreemarket.org. And that’s all I have to say. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Administrator Rogers. Okay. I would like to give an update. I don’t know, can everybody hear me okay? It feels like it’s a little quiet. Jay in the, oh, there we go. Maybe, Jay, can you turn my microphone up a little bit? Okay, is that better? Good? Okay. Perfect. Okay. Over the last couple of months, a number of engaged citizens have come to council advocating for a proposal to build 100% affordable housing project on the current firehouse site. I understand the desire for the building and appreciate the plan presented, which was given great thought and care for what might be a good fit for that site. Our Mount Laurel Subcommittee, which includes our Affordable Housing Attorney and City Planner, have met several times to discuss and consider all of the aspects of this detailed proposal. After careful consideration, and for several reasons, the Subcommittee cannot recommend that the city move forward with this proposal. We appreciate that this will be, I appreciate this is going to be a disappointment to many who worked very hard and supported this proposal. So we want to reiterate Summit’s commitment to fostering an inclusive community with a focus on affordable housing that is embedded in both our zoning master plan and our court-approved affordable housing plan. That said, we would like, we would still like to benefit from the ideas presented, and to that end, Mayor Fagan, council members, and myself plan to engage the Summit Affordable Housing Corporation and local advocates with a working committee to discuss affordable housing strategies and priorities in other locations in town. Meanwhile, the city has been actively studying its options for a traditional approach of blending affordable housing units with the market rate units and commercial space. This remains the city’s approach to working towards our affordable housing obligations while also achieving other community benefits, including fiscal benefits that support all residents. The city is going to put out more information, but just on a personal note, you know, I appreciate everybody coming to the meeting and talking about the plan and that they care about affordable housing and that this firehouse site would have felt like the right place. And the meeting that we had went very well, and I know that it’s not always what we want to hear, but I’m looking forward to working with the Summit Affordable Housing Corp. We’re going to put together a working group, we’re going to, Mark said that he would take us around Madison and take a look at various sites to see what kind of affordable housing that Madison has rolled out. They do it in smaller sites, it’s inclusive, so I’m looking forward to, you know, working with you, with the Summit Affordable Housing Corp. and seeing what we can do for the next 10 years. So there’ll be more information put out, but I just wanted to let everybody know that. Okay. Next. All right. We canceled our historical minute, right?
Yes, we did. It’s postponed until May 21st.
Okay. Then we were going to move on to ceremonial awards. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. I am very excited to introduce the winners of the 7th grade What Is the Future of Global Energy debate teams from Lawton C. Johnson Middle School. This debate was a culmination of hard work, dedication, and critical thinking from both Mrs. Rommel’s science class and Mr. Welsh’s social studies class. In February, these students engaged in rigorous preparation process that involve content area study, independent research, and collaborative efforts to explore the future of global energy. With enthusiasm and determination, they delved into the complexities of various energy sources, including nuclear, wind, solar, and hydro. Over the course of two days, parent volunteers had the challenging task of judging the debates, assessing the quality of presentations, depth of content, and the persuasiveness of arguments. Each team brought forth compelling narratives and well-researched information, making the decision-making process incredibly difficult. Despite the outstanding performance of all the teams, there can only be one winner, and in both classes, solar emerged as victorious. However, it’s worth noting that each team’s presentation was commendable, showcasing their passion for the topic and their dedication to excellence. I extend my congratulations to all the students who participated in the enriching experience. With that, Mr. Welsh, would you like to introduce the 7th grade winners of the energy debate team?
Sure. Jonathan Pauls.
We have not gotten a picture yet tonight, but we’ll make sure we get one before we begin.
We can, maybe we can get one when we hand out the certificates.
Yeah, sure, thank you. So on behalf of myself and Mrs. Rommel, who couldn’t be here this evening, we just continue to be honored to serve in this community. We’re excited about the chance to appear in front of the council tonight and to kind of recognize the efforts of our, of our young scholars here. So thanks for the time, and it is an honor to be able to look at real-world problems with those who are going to be addressing those in the, in the years ahead.
You can hold, you can hold it. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. So in Mr. Welsh’s social studies class, we learned about the Industrial Revolution. The Industrial Revolution, which took place between the 1750s and the 1850s, marked the turning point in manufacturing as the making of goods evolved from hand production. Everyday life was transformed by exciting technologies and new advancements in transportation. Urbanization followed industrialization, and the steam engine revolutionized transportation. Much of this industrialization, however, was made possible by fossil fuels, mainly coal.
That’s a great point, Adam. In addition, in science class with Mrs. Rommel, we learned about how the dependence on fossil fuels as sources for generating energy has ecological consequences which must be considered. Measurements collected by NASA satellites show that the current CO2 levels are 422 parts per million, which is an increase by 50% in less than 200 years since the Industrial Revolution. Greenhouse gases such as CO2 and methane trap heat on Earth’s surface, resulting in warmer global temperatures leading to climate change. Furthermore, the supply of these fossil fuels is finite, making these sources nonrenewable.
Thank you, Morgan.
On Team 7C, we debate in social studies as in addition to Harkness Conversations, which is a class-wide conversation. Some topics are unprecedented, such as Thomas Jefferson versus Alexander Hamilton, or John Quincy Adams versus Andrew Jackson. We discuss topics in a meaningful way so that allows us to form opinions and also learn from each other. And this year, for the fourth time, we have decided to pivot from presidential debates to the debate on our growing crisis on global warming.
Thank you, Timmy. For this debate, we debated in front of volunteers who posed as investors. Although solar has never won before and almost got removed, we ended up winning our fifth and sixth period, which are also our two afternoon classes. Here, here today, we talk about our debate and how, how we beat wind, hydro, and nuclear power. Thank you.
Great point, Katie. Now to talk about the debate. The debate lasted two days but took weeks in preparation in both our social studies and science classes. We started by doing extensive research with the guidance of our teachers and librarians. Next, we prepared our arguments with our assigned teams. Each team consisted of four to five students.
Good point, Morgan. For this debate, we had parent volunteers as investors who came in. Each one of these parents listened to us present our ideas that answered questions such as, how much energy can this source generate, and what is the potential of this source? After both days, the investors would leave to discuss and decide a winner. Some basic tips for debating are eye contact, project your voice, and standing up to show that you really believe in your topic.
Thank you, Jason. Solar power is shown to be one of the best energy sources for Summit and even for our Earth. We have shown this because it is very easy to use and it doesn’t hurt our environment at all. It’s very portable, and it can even be at your house and many other places. These places can include phone chargers, electric devices, and even some security cameras. Another thing about solar is that it’s very affordable, and if you, and it generates more energy than you need. You can sell it to, you can even sell it to a power company. Most solar panels generate enough energy to store up for rainy and cloudy days, days, and days that you still have electricity, and it won’t cost anything.
Thanks, Rachel. This is how solar power can be used in Summit. Solar power is an effective way to produce electricity and should be used in Summit. Summit has a lot of open parking lots, like the ones at the middle school, high school, and the lots in downtown. If we build a contraption such as a solar canopy, we can create, we can generate a lot of electricity and also provide shade and protect cars from weather such as rain, snow, and ice. Another way to power Summit with solar power is to put solar panels on the roofs of downtown shops. These shops are in direct sunlight, so they can absorb a lot of energy. One last idea is powering traffic lights with solar panels. Already constructed traffic lights can be modified to use solar power by attaching a panel to the light or pole and hooking it up to the light.
Thank you very much. I believe our council president has something she’d like to present to all of you.
Yes. Okay. And I just want to say two things that stood out was the solar energy. I know that you are big on that, so hopefully that’s something that we can really look to do if the city. And the second idea was, one of the things that stood out to me is when you said working together to form opinions in a meaningful way. I think that is a good theme. So thank you so much for coming tonight. I’m going to give you these certifications and. Jemelle. Let’s take a picture. Okay. Rachel. Timmy. Matthew. Katie. Morgan. And Adam. And I love the eye contact. That was one of my favorites. So.
No worries.
Do you need two layers? Okay. Ready, everybody? Look here, one, two, three. Very nice. Good, good, good. Nice. Thank you. It was so nice to meet you. Thank you so much. Excellent job. Excellent. Thank you. Wonderful job. All right. Thank you. You guys are hope for the future. Thanks. Bye.
I just wanted to know that they’re leaving, but I just wanted to say a quick word. So thank you very much. Your hard work and dedication have truly paid off, and your achievement serves as an inspiration to all of us. Transitioning to renewable energy sources like solar power can significantly reduce energy costs and carbon emissions while promoting sustainability. With that being said, this is my commitment to you. I will be submitting a DAR request to our Department of Community Services and CAPS Committee tomorrow to implement a pilot program at the Summit Free Market Building, which can serve as a valuable demonstration of the benefits of solar energy for our community. Leveraging power, leveraging a power purchasing agreement with a state-approved contractor would not cost the city anything for installation or maintenance for up to 15 years, while reducing carbon emissions and energy costs currently being powered by propane.
Thank you. All right. That’s it, right? Okay, we’re going to move to public comment. Tonight, we are going to have our budget hearing toward the end of our meeting, so for public comment period tonight, we’re going to be limiting it initially upfront to an hour. We want to make sure we get to our hearing in a timely fashion because it’s going to get late. We may not need to go that long, of course, but in case, I just want to let you know, and if we do run over, if it’s an hour and we need more public comment time, we’ll put it at the end, so we’ll get plenty of time in. We welcome comments from any member of the public about issues not on tonight’s agenda, and whenever audience members read from a prepared statement, please provide a copy to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. If you have any questions that do not get answered tonight, please email your questions to cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, please speak once and limit your comments to three minutes. Additionally, we need you to state your name and home address, and if you’re speaking on behalf of a group, please just be sure to include the address of the group you’re representing. Okay? So we begin.
Good evening. As a resident at 108 Beekman Road since 2006, and a parent of 2009 Summit High School graduate who received her law and business degrees before creating a national tech startup, I thank you for the opportunity to be a citizen among you. I’m Matthew Winkler, co-founder and editor-in-chief emeritus of Bloomberg News, where I’ve been employed the past 34 years. We and I include my wife Lisa, of 42 years, a former public school teacher, author, mother of three children, grandmother of 13, can live anywhere. We choose to live in Summit because of its commitment to the future, which is another way of saying stellar schools, social and professional mobility, and the pursuit of excellence. All of this comes from Summit’s fiscal responsibility, which is why the Summit City Council began 2024 in the most fortunate circumstances, inheriting from its immediate predecessors an exceptional report card from Moody’s Investor Service, the closest thing to an objective assessment of where Summit stands. In its credit opinion of June 29th, 2023, Moody’s reaffirmed its highest AAA rating with a stable outlook, reflecting the company’s expectations that the city’s economy and finances will remain a strength and leverage will remain at manageable levels. Moody’s nevertheless warned that a material increase in leverage, which currently is 388% of debt to revenue, could lead to a downgrade, which it didn’t anticipate based on the record of frugality referenced last June. The Summit City Council now is poised to enact the largest tax increase in at least 10 years to support a capital budget that doubles this year and increases 250% next year. The same budget shows an 8.2% increase to appropriations and an almost 3% increase in pensionable positions, ultimately to be supported by new debt and likely additional taxes. These are the very risks underlying Moody’s warning to Summit not to increase the city’s debt ratios, which this budget ultimately does. The last time I came before you, the Summit Council President repeatedly said she was in favor of affordable housing after casticating such legislation before the New Jersey Senate. The surest way for Summit City Council to make Summit more affordable is to lower the tax burden or limit any increase to the barest minimum with the most transparent scrutiny, especially for least advantaged.
Sorry, your time is up. Please, if you submit your statement, it’ll be in full in the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
What was that resident’s name?
Matt Winkler. Mr. Winkler, do you want to give us your statement? Do you want to give us your statement? So we can have it for the record. It’ll be in there. It’ll be with the, the minutes. Oh, right here. Thanks.
I just had another sentence.
It’s okay. Thank you. Hi. Please state your name and home address, please.
Dr. R. Farrell, I live at 14 Pearl Street. Farrell is F-A-R-R-E-L-L. Actually, I’ve been in Summit just a few months fewer than my new friend Matt, who we spoke before the meeting. So, in the words of the leadership guru and author Jim Collins, “Bad decisions made with good intentions are still bad decisions.” I see three major reasons why this proposed budget, especially the 2% property tax increase it calls for, is a bad decision. First, there’s the tax increase, which by the city’s own admission does not appear necessary. I call attention to the revenue section on page two of the municipal budget snapshot recently mailed citywide, where it notes that valuation growth, quote, “will generate new municipal tax revenue to offset levy increase by approximately $741,000.” Now, my understanding of an offset is when an additional expense is countered by either additional revenue or reduced spending elsewhere in the budget. This spending plan does neither. Instead, it raises expenditures while simultaneously failing to capitalize on the organic revenue growth resulting from an increase in the tax base, which doesn’t even include the potential impact, the future impact of J&amp;J’s proposed takeover, well, it’s now happening, of the former Celgene site. My second concern is the timing. With both county and school district taxes also expected to increase, now is not the time to put an additional burden on the city’s taxpayers, especially the homeowners who shoulder more than 80% of the municipal tax burden. And unlike commercial property owners, we’re limited in how much of our local taxes can be deducted at the federal level, and we certainly can’t pass those increases along to our customers or tenants. No amount of lip service towards the idea of affordable housing can paper over the reality that this ill-conceived and ill-timed tax increase will make Summit less affordable for everyone, especially our neighbors who are already struggling as a result of inflation, high interest rates, and the lingering economic effects of the pandemic. Third, and most troubling to me, is the question of intentions. Let’s just say I’m not optimistic and leave it at that. With regard to the $5 million set aside for uncollected taxes, as I understand it, the city’s tax collection rate falls just shy of 99.8%. This appears to be, to put it mildly, a solution desperately in search of a problem. Despite its designation as a reserve, we all know it would take only a simple vote of the council majority to amend the budget once adopted to redirect those funds, the moment that problem is identified by that majority, if it hasn’t been already. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I will email it to Rose.
Yeah, you know, and I just want to make sure that the public comment period is for anything not on the agenda, which the, the budget is on the agenda tonight. So, Andrew, the, you’re not talking about budget, okay. So the budget discussion will happen when we open the hearing, so yeah, thanks.
Hi, my name is Andrew Walker. I live at 242 Kent Place Boulevard. I’ve been a resident of Summit for over 25 years, and I’m also a part of the At Home and Summit Community Group. So Council President Allen, thank you for your comments earlier, council members. We are at home in Summit in support of the Summit Affordable Housing Corporation’s proposal. We are extremely disappointed and frankly surprised that the common council has turned down the Summit Affordable Housing Corporation’s sound and doable proposal to create 42 units of much-needed affordable housing in Summit. Our question to the common council, what is the plan to create an equal number, 42 units, of affordable housing over the next two to three years? Relying on inclusionary zoning, so that’s the 15% set aside in market rate housing and the overlay zones, they have not worked. The overlay zones created as part of the 2016 settlement agreement with fair share housing has not resulted in a single unit of affordable housing in Summit. And over the last 10 years, only four affordable rental units have been created through the 15% set aside. In fact, over the past 37 years, only 24 affordable rental units have been created through this mechanism. This is a dismal track record of affordable housing production when there is so much need. It is not reasonable to think that the city can meet its unmet housing need through overlay zones and set-asides. We need to be more proactive. So to put this in a perspective, the city would need to build 280 units of market rate housing that require a 15% set aside to equal the 42 units of affordable housing proposed for the firehouse site. By rejecting this proposal, the common council is saying, in effect, that it will prioritize market rate or luxury housing, and that the creation of affordable housing is a secondary concern. So we ask that the council keep the firehouse site under consideration for 100% affordable housing and prioritize affordable housing to give working families the opportunity to enjoy all that Summit has to offer. Thank you.
Any public comment not on the agenda? Non-budget, right?
No.
Okay.
Well, I have a question about that, but, well, Chinchuli, Orchard Street and Summit, I’ve been on Orchard Street 51 years, lifelong resident of Summit, and I have, you know, I’m listening to comments about taxes. In 51 years, I remember my taxes going down one time. You know, Republican, Democrat, whoever was in charge, my taxes have been going up for as long as I can remember.
that the city can meet its unmet housing need through overlay zones and set-asides. We need to be more proactive. So to put this into perspective, the city would need to build 280 units of market-rate housing that require a 15% set aside to equal the 42 units of affordable housing proposed for the Firehouse site. By rejecting this proposal, the Common Council is saying, in effect, that it will prioritize market-rate or luxury housing and that the creation of affordable housing is a secondary concern. So we ask that the council keep the Firehouse site under consideration for 100% affordable housing and prioritize affordable housing to give working families the opportunity to enjoy all that Summit has to offer. Thank you.
Any public comment not on the agenda? Non-budget, right?
No.
Okay.
Well, I have a question about that. Paul Chinchuli, Orchard Street, Summit. I've been on Orchard Street 51 years, life-long resident of Summit. And I have, you know, I'm listening to comments about taxes. In 51 years, I remember my taxes going down one time. You know, Republican, Democrat, whoever was in charge, my taxes have been going up for as long as I can remember. So if somebody can make me understand why it's the Summit Council, right now, the reason for taxes going up, I just don't have a, I don't see it. Can somebody explain that to me?
Not this moment. We will later in the budget hearing.
The other thing I want to talk about is Bryant Parkway. I'm right on the corner of Bryant Parkway. And that project was supposed to be a temporary setup. And all of a sudden, one day, it had become permanent. And I don't remember anybody ever taking any survey of the residents to see how it was working out. And the fact of the matter is, it's terrible. Okay, I'm on Orchard. And in the morning and the afternoon, sometimes it takes me 10 minutes to get out of my driveway. Okay, people are cutting the light up on Broad Street and coming down Princeton and Yale. And when I'm sitting in my driveway waiting to get out, the light up turns, and there's four or five cars shooting out of Princeton and Yale because they're cutting the light. And Bryant Parkway, it's just, it's a nightmare. Because all the traffic comes to the light now because they can't go down Bryant Parkway. They come to the light, make a left, and come down Orchard. The traffic on Orchard is horrendous. And it's awful. And I think it needs to be looked at because I don't know how that got to be made permanent. I don't ever remember any notification saying that this was going to be permanent. All of a sudden, one day, they were painting stripes on the street, and it was permanent. But, you know, I think it needs to be looked at again because it's really bad.
Thank you.
The other thing I want to say is Bryant Park. The project is, it's great. I've spoken to the guy who's in charge of the digging. And I'll tell you, it looks good. That was a great thing.
Yeah, thank you. We're excited about that. Okay. Your question about taxes will be handled during the hearing, okay. And then Orchard, we can, we'll cover after the closing of public comments.
Good evening. Jocelyn Modesto, 61 Butler Parkway. I'm here to discuss the proposed lights at Tatlock. Throughout the small neighborhood meetings, the Tatlock community has made a compelling case for why the stadium lights will be dangerous, damaging, and detrimental to our neighborhood and should not be considered any further. When asked what he was planning to do with our concerns or how he was going to weigh the impact on our lives against the sports community's wish for lights, Councilman Smallwood did not have an answer. All he kept repeating was that he was listening to us. To that, I say, if you are truly listening and hearing the Tatlock community's position, you would stop this project in its tracks, dismantle the lighting subcommittee, and put energy into looking for a solution that does not severely and negatively affect an entire neighborhood, especially when that same neighborhood has been significantly impacted by the burden it already carries for the Summit sports programs. It was very alarming when Councilman Smallwood said that nothing has been set regarding the lights. They could be on, they could be off at 9:00, 10:00, or even 11:00. This was the first time 11:00 PM was mentioned as an option. And the fact that he would even say that as a possibility underscores that the neighborhood's concerns have not been truly heard. Additionally, his presentation to the boosters tomorrow night brings the project out of step two and into step three, well in advance of any promised studies being conducted and certainly without having time to meaningfully digest the comments and concerns of the Tatlock community. Councilman Smallwood then closed out the meeting by encouraging us to reach out to our council members with further concerns. One of the representatives for Tatlock is Councilman Palowski. He has made it clear that he supports the lighting proposal despite the adverse impacts it will have on a large portion of the constituents. He even went as far as to recently resign from the Summit Lacrosse Board mid-season to preserve his ability to vote yes for the lights. This just further highlights the fact that the deck is stacked against the Washington community once again. History is repeating itself as the Tatlock neighborhood is forced to downgrade our quality of life again and accept more traffic, noise, parking, and safety issues. But now it also comes with light pollution, harmful health effects from artificial lights at night, and dangerous conditions caused by glare. It is not a compromise when one party gets their wish and the other party is left worse off than they are right now. It's more akin to the Tatlock community being steamrolled. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to comment for a minute on affordable housing at Summit. I'm going to leave this with the clerk, but I think everybody's aware of this. We have a fair share agreement, which was signed by Mayor Reddist and Kevin Walsh of the Fair Share Housing Center, which the city, through its staff and developers and builders, has been working to accomplish. I think it's important to note that on page five, it states, "Summit shall not be required to facilitate construction of a single 50-unit, all-affordable development and agrees to the maximum extent possible to rely on nonprofit developers to develop the 50 units of affordable housing." Furthermore, the agreement on the same page at paragraph G says, "The city shall make all reasonable efforts to facilitate," which does not put the obligation on the city to build. And I just have to state, from my experience in developing affordable housing with private developers over 30-plus years, that segregating communities is a mistake. It used to be a policy of COA not to segregate affordable housing into one building or one spot, and for obvious reasons. For some reason now, some of that has changed. But it still doesn't make sense. The only thing that makes sense is to integrate affordable units within the community and within the projects. And that's really what Summit should be looking to accomplish. If they wish to help Summit at home, I wouldn't have a problem with that. I think it's a good idea. I do want to know why the corporation has its address at Summit City Hall, whether that was authorized by the city council or not. But, and the Secretary of State records, it shows that the corporation does have happened to have an address at City Hall associated with the current housing authority. Now, I don't remember the council ever approving that or making that corporation part of the city. But in any event, that's a question to be answered later. I'm just going to leave a copy of this agreement, which I think a lot of people are familiar with, with the clerk. And thank you very much.
Thank you. For the record, sir, would you please state your name and to the microphone? And your address?
It's Peter LaJoy, 124 Kennebuck Parkway, Summit, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you for your mic.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else for public comment? For not on the agenda?
Hi, Kevin McGoye, 113 Woodland Avenue. So I received this glossy mailer in my mailbox. It says, "Property," and this may explain what you were asking. "Summit, our property taxes are going up." And on the back, it said, "Dear neighbor, did you hear? Fact," all caps. "Under the newly-elected Republican majority, the city budget contains the largest property tax increase in over 10 years." And then it's got an asterisk that brings you to a, I mean, it's really small, but you bring it to, it doesn't show anything about a history of taxes or anything like that. So I went back and looked. Okay, let me just go back a couple of years and see. Because, you know, our tax increase this year, our property tax increase this year, by my math, pretty simple, is 0.86%. That's what my property taxes are going to go up. So the average taxpayer is going to pay $19,012. Okay, that's up $163 from last year, when they paid $18,849. So then I look back, okay, let me see what happened last year. Not 10 years ago. Last year, the average property tax went up by $206, or 1.12%. Again, this year, it's 0.86% and $163. So I think 206 is bigger than 163. So I don't know about that fact. Let's go back further. The previous year went up $140 on a smaller base. That was 0.76% tax increase. You know, a little bit smaller than this year. The year before, it went down 0.23%. The year before that, it went up $213.38. That's 1.16%, again, higher than this year. And the year before that, the average taxpayer, their tax bill increased $413.72. That's 2.29% increase, a lot more than 0.86 and $163. Then it goes back, fact, the Republican council increased the capital budget by 104%. Okay, I look back at the capital budgets. In 2019, the capital budget went from $5 million in 2018 to $15.4 million. Where was everybody, where were these, where were these then? Then, if you look back historically, the maintenance capex looks like it's between $4 and $5 million. The last two years, it dropped down to 2 and 1.9. Okay? Then the last bullet point, so I think that was an unsustainable capex level. The last point, fact, that Summit, as a residential taxpayer, pays nearly double the state average in property taxes is because our home values are double what the average are. Probably more. But anyway.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Not on the agenda? Okay, we're going to close the public, oh, come on, Henry.
I guess I'll be the Henry.
Yeah, that's fine. Under the wire.
Henry Bassman, 18 Gargle Road.
I'm not going to talk about lights tonight. I'm going to talk about something I think is more important. The ability to speak back to government is a special privilege of a democratic society. But the way this has evolved in Summit, I find problematic. First, you get to talk for as long as you want, as many times as you want, and we have to talk once for three minutes. And I don't know who decided that three minutes is the optimal time. Maybe if you've got something simple to say, three minutes is fine. If you've got something complex, maybe you need a little more time. For every issue, whether it's the capital budget, municipal budget, affordable housing, lights at Tatlock, the proponents are invited to give a presentation. But the opponents are never invited to give a presentation. How can you make a good decision without hearing both sides of the issue? I'm suggesting that, for my interest, that in the autumn, when all the information is in with the environmental survey and the traffic survey, lighting survey, that you invite the Tatlock neighbors to make a presentation. So quickly, three other things. And they involve demeanor. First is the countdown clock. I've talked to a number of people. This is stressful enough. That clock increases the stress exponentially. Second, the abrupt way that people are now being shut down at precisely three minutes and not given even the opportunity to finish a sentence, much less a paragraph, lacks decorum. And third, and it's rude. And third, while watching other public comments, I noticed that a significant number of the people here on the panel are not listening. And if you don't listen, how can you hear? As many as seven people tonight were engaged in doing other things rather than looking and listening to the person who was making the public comment. That shouldn't happen. Those are my comments. I hope you don't mind. But they're offered in the spirit of making public debate more effective and you getting better information on which to make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Anna Quintero. I live at 65 Butler Parkway. I would like to start off by saying thank you for your service to Summit. I appreciate that it takes a lot of commitment and time to do what you all do. I'm here as a concerned member of the Tatlock community. I live right across the street from the clearing by Investors Field. I have lived there for eight years and have absolutely loved living in the neighborhood. When Friday Night Lights was a yearly event, my family and I really enjoyed it so much. We knew it was a once-a-year event, and we knew to be extra careful around that night. We needed to be very cautious with how we parked our cars, making sure that we backed in so that if we had to leave the house, we could drive out of the driveway and onto the street front first in a safe way, as long as we were extra cautious. We knew that the craziness and sometimes unruly behavior from kids who were high or drunk was only an event that we had to be careful with one night out of the year. We knew that this craziness that was brought in for those night games was something that attracted many more people than the people that were just coming to watch the game. They were coming for the party. They were coming for the celebration, not just to watch the game. But hey, it was fun, and it was an event for everyone, and it was a special event that we could all be okay with because it was only one night out of the year. Friday Night Lights was a blast. However, the proposal of lighting the field with permanent lights is a totally different animal. It's an awful prospect for the Tatlock community. You've heard the countless pleas from the local community giving you all of the reasons why we are terrified of what this will do to our neighborhood and to our day-to-day living. We have no idea what the scale of the number of night games of all of the sports will bring on in our community. There is no telling because anything that you guys offer us now could potentially and easily change very soon in the near future. I do wonder, after hearing so many people complain about the noise and the disturbances around the field events, if you all realize we don't actually all mind those things all that much when they happen at adequate hours. I love the cheering. I love the whistles. I love the spirit and the energy. I love it during adequate hours. I actually love when I wake up to it because of it on weekend mornings or on summer weekdays. But there should be a limit to hours at which these things happen. We, as residents of Summit, as taxpayers, as equal members of the community, deserve to be able to have peace and quiet at hours when this noise is not adequate. We deserve to be able to put our young children and grandchildren to bed and be able to enjoy the peace and quiet that all of you get to enjoy and have gotten to enjoy at bedtime for your young ones and for yourselves and at dinnertime with your families and when you want to enjoy a beautiful evening outside. We deserve not to have to worry about the over-the-top noise and chaos on the streets adjacent to the field with loud voices and cars with their constant beeps locking and unlocking and beeps trying to get somebody's attention until potentially 10:00 PM. We deserve to be able to have limits to the time of day of all of these fun and beautiful community games.
Madam, your time is up.
Okay. We beg of you, do not force this upon us in our homes when we should have the right to have the peace and quiet and family time that you all are going to get to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, can we take your statement? Okay. Any other public comments not on the agenda? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. And I just want to kick it over to Mr. Jacoby. Will you talk about the time limit?
Before I go, let me get my notes. Sorry, I apologize for not having your seat.
It's okay. You're not leaving yet, are you? Oh, wait, we're going to, I want to address the three minutes. Just in terms of, oh, yeah, yeah. Did you want to talk about the time limit at all, about the three minutes?
Yeah, absolutely. So during the open public meeting, portion of a meeting, all meetings are open to the public. There are the council meeting, and the public has an opportunity to speak. The law is very clear. You have to be consistent in the time permitted for each person speaking. You can't vary it. You can't give one person four minutes, one person three minutes, one person three minutes and 15 seconds. So we offer three-minute speaking. We ask people to wrap it up when they hit. And if people go over a second or two, we generally indulge them. But it's to be consistent because if you're not, then you subject the town to liability where people do where people do file lawsuits for violating the Open Public Meeting Act claiming that you have been disparate in your treatment of public speakers. So we're doing it consistently and the council actually moved the meetings to the beginning of the meeting so the people didn't have to stay here till, you know, later in the evening. And this evening, people are going to actually have two opportunities to speak. But the other thing I will say is that this is comments that are not on the agenda. And I can tell you, I represent a lot of public entities and I go to a lot of public meetings. And in all of my experience, I've never seen a public entity like this be as generous as they are with public comments. Because not only do they let you have three minutes on non-agenda items on every resolution, much to my chagrin, actually, because I said, "You guys are all out of your minds," but they do it, they ask the public if they'd like to comment on every resolution. They ask the public, "Would you like to comment on the consent agenda?" That is very atypical. Usually, there is a public comment of three minutes on agenda and non-agenda items and that's it. But here, you have three minutes on non-agenda items and then you have three minutes on literally everything that's on the agenda. And then tonight, you're going to have another three minutes on the budget. So, you know, and I can tell you that I have never, you know, a lot of meetings, a lot of public meetings wrap up much quicker when you limit it to three minutes for all comments. That's not what they do here. And I think that, you know, it's a head off to, as long as I've been here for, you know, five, probably five or so years, they've done that consistently, no matter who's been the council president, where they open it up to on every separate item. So I think that's very unique and it does provide for a lot of dialogue. And I can tell you that a lot of the things that I'm doing when I'm looking at is I'm writing down names and comments so that I can bring things up with the, with the council filing people's public comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say something?
I just want to, actually, I just wanted, I wanted to respond first. And so, listen, Henry, I would be here all night. I love to listen. Part of having the timer is because I would end up letting you talk for five minutes early on. I did get quite a bit of criticism because I was allowing this to go too long. So I'm trying to be consistent and as a business meeting, this is the only time that the council can actually deliberate altogether. So that's part of the reason, too, that we want to keep it succinct. You know, our meetings usually go till 11, 11:30, sometimes 12 o'clock. And I do want to be mindful of the staff. I am more than willing to have a conversation with you outside of the council chambers. I even, I really do want people to feel welcome here. It's important to me. I know we're not always going to agree on issues, but there's never a moment that I want you to feel disrespected, you know, from myself or from any of the council members. So I just want you to know that. Okay? I'm sorry, Councilman Miniger.
Sure, thank you. So I took a little heat last year when I was council president, right, for moving the public comments to the end of the meeting. We would prioritize the business of the city and then we would get to the stuff that was not on the agenda. And I felt like because we did that and we were done with the stuff that had to get done, we could spend as much time as we needed hearing from the community. And I would very often let people go way over three minutes. So my two questions, Matt, would be, number one, it's still the council president's prerogative, right, to allow people to go longer if the council president wants to? And second would be, why were you letting me allow people go on so long last year? I mean, seriously, I'm not trying to ambush you, but like, we had lots of conversations about this last year and this is the first time I'm hearing about, you know, we absolutely must be consistent or we're--
I disagree with you. I did, I did cut people off last year. That's totally inaccurate. I could probably go back to meetings where I said, "Your time is up, so you have to sit down."
Yeah, that was when I would cut them off, right? That was when I would say we're--
But, but in terms of, I'm not the timekeeper. Your clerk is the timekeeper. And when people, when time is up, I would very often say, "You have to cease commenting." I always did. And I also told you, the fact of the matter is that you guys indulge the public more than most places because even when you had the public comments, and it was on non-agenda items at the end, on agenda items, you were limiting it to, but you open up every resolution. You say their console comments. So I, you did do it consistently last year. You had some issues, but if you, you know, let somebody go on a few minutes, a few seconds beyond, that's okay, a few seconds, but not minutes. And I don't recall anybody talking for five or six minutes beyond the timeframe that was set. I just think that's not, that's not accurate with what happened last year.
I think we, I think we got to go to the tapes on that one.
You should, because I cut off a lot of people.
I think we left here a lot later than 11 o'clock, more than once, last year.
It's because you had multiple people speaking. But we kept to the time limit.
And I just want to say, so to your point about public comments at the beginning, public comments at the end, there is no magic to that. I, I tend to agree. So this is great because people know that when public comments is at the very beginning, you know that you can come here and you're going to be able to catch public comments. Part of the reason that I think it was under, was it Councilman Ido? Somebody changed it from the public comments to the beginning to the end, or I'm sorry, somebody reversed it. Yeah, somebody reversed it. And part of it was, they wanted to get through the business and then do it at the end. And so then people aren't quite sure when to come when it's at the end. So honestly, this is actually a discussion topic at the municipal, the legal municipalities in November. Nobody knows if they should actually have public comment at the beginning or the end because at the end of the day, there's no right moment. And so if you're consistent, I've been told to be consistent, you're always welcome to come and I'll have a coffee with you. You're here for three minutes. You can comment in public comments and all the other things that are on the agenda. And I do remember Matt cutting people off, so.
Council President--
But it's not a--
I got yelled at a few times, too.
I just couldn't help but think that Councilman Vartan told me my three minutes was up last year several times. So I just want to reaffirm your recollection. I was just watching it last night.
Yeah, we'll check. We'll check all, you know, I let a lot of people who are in the room talk for a very long time.
Not me.
Especially because, especially because they were at the end of the meeting. That's where I'll leave it.
Councilman Vartan, is there a concern?
Sorry?
Is there a concern? You seem very upset by this decision.
Listen, at the end of the day, I think we all want to hear you speak. There's different leadership styles. There's different ways to handle this. At the end of the day, we want to hear you speak. We've got to get our city staff home. We want to hear you. You guys are going to have different leadership styles. You all do a great job, right? We can talk about all this later, in my opinion.
Thank you. Administrator Rogers, do you want to talk about the address for SAHC? No? It's, it's the city, right? Just to confirm. Okay. Councilwoman Hamlet, do you want to talk about Orchard? Is there any, I don't know who was following up on--
Council President, on that point, when you were saying the address, I wasn't sure what you were asking. So I think the reason why it's actually, the address is City Hall is because the Summit Housing Authority, when they created this, and I don't know this, I'm speaking just because I think this is how it was done. The Summit Affordable Housing Corp. was, was created through the Summit Housing Authority and they're located at this address. So I think that's the reason why that's their address.
Okay. All right. And do you want to talk about Tatlock Lights?
Yes.
Okay.
So I clearly need to think about what I say, every single word, at last night's Tatlock meeting. The point that I was trying to make was the fact that there have been no, we're not even close to determining when lights would be on, if lights go in. We're not there yet. So the point of me trying to say that lights are 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, I didn't mean that lights would be on till 11 o'clock. I could say 1 o'clock a.m., 2 a.m., 3 a.m., 4 a.m. It's not the point that I was trying to make. The point that I was trying to make was the fact that we have not even come close to be determining if, when light, if, and when lights go in, what, when they would be. That's something that's going to happen in many more discussions down the road. There are many, there is a traffic study, a comprehensive traffic study that we're going to do. There is an environmental study that we're going to do. A comment was brought up, why am I speaking to the boosters? I promised the Tatlock neighborhood on our very first meeting in February 7th that I would meet with any neighbor that lived in and around Tatlock Field. We set up five meetings. We set up staggered days to try to accommodate as many people as possible. We had anywhere from 10 to 13 to 14 people. I wanted to keep them small because I felt like filling in an auditorium is not going to be productive. I wanted to have small community meetings so that we could listen and hear all of your concerns. I made a promise to meet with you and I kept my promise. And I'm going to continue listening to you because at this point, that is all where, that's all we're at right now, is a listening point. A lot of the concerns that happened through each meeting, it was repetitive. We found it, there's a, there's a strong concern, obviously, there's traffic, there's safety, there's environmental, you know, there's, all of those, all of those minutes are on the city website. And my promise to you was to meet with you and listen and hear your concerns. When the boosters asked me to come and present to them last month, there was a resident that said, "You haven't finished your meetings with Tatlock yet." I said, "You're right." I canceled my, my meeting with the boosters and asked them to move it to the following month, which happens to be tomorrow night. It is an open meeting. Anybody can attend. There's nothing being done behind the scenes. I have never met with the boosters. They wanted to find out what was going on. They heard that I was meeting with the Tatlock neighborhood. And I'm going, the presentation is more or less going to be a question and answer for as much as I have. And we'll review some of the comments so that the sports community understands the concerns of the Tatlock neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, and I do have one more thing. Mr. Bassman, my memory's not that great and there's usually a lot of people who come up and speak, so I write the names down and the topic that they're speaking about so that in the event that I need to respond to something, I can address it.
Okay. Okay.
Just a couple of quick comments. Ironically enough, going through five binders for the budget, I dug up that the Tatlock Lights were actually approved in 2020, which means I guess they were requested in 2019. I didn't go further back from that, but I thought it was just an interesting point because I couldn't remember when they were, when they were introduced. But ironically enough, I've been speaking to a lot of residents near the Beacon Hill Club and I think some of the residents are equally as frustrated that we don't have a time limit on certain lights. So through you, Council President, Director Schreger, I was wondering, can you confirm that we don't have a lighting ordinance right now?
We do not.
Okay. So I would be amenable to looking into that. I know it's a concern with other neighborhoods, regardless of Tatlock Lights. I think it's reasonable to do an ordinance like that. It's pretty basic. We can talk about it in committee, Councilman Vartan, if you think that would be a good idea. Sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
So I think we can say that we are all for an ordinance that can put lights off at a certain time. I not speak for the rest of my council, but we can vote on that. But I think that's a reasonable and rational way to handle some of your concerns. Might not have to do with Tatlock Lights, but I think we can certainly put some--
So I just want to, can I just add on two things to that? So just want to go back to the one thing, which was the approval of lights that you just referenced.
The lighting study, sorry.
Right, okay. Just to be very clear with everybody, right?
Sorry, I meant lighting study.
Like, what was funded--
Yes.
--in a capital budget was a study--
Yes, the study.
--which was finished and now that's--
Yes, thank you, Councilman Vartan.
Yes. And then the second thing is, you know, there's already in the DRO restrictions on the heights of light, light structures that you can add, right? There's already lots of very specific design details. The thing that maybe residents don't know is that the city doesn't have to follow it. We don't, the city doesn't have to follow our own DRO. So we're, the city can make the decision, put in 80-foot lights if they, and the ordinance wouldn't matter. A lighting ordinance wouldn't apply to the city.
I was talking about the time, the timing.
Yeah, still, I don't think, that would be a DRO thing and it still wouldn't apply to the city. So I, I think that, that suggestion is a good one that we should definitely look into because it pertains to other private clubs, but it's also certainly not, shouldn't make anybody feel more secure.
I mean, Director, through you, Council President, Director Schreger, don't other municipalities have lighting ordinances pretty often? Is that something that we can enforce?
I'm not sure if other, I assume some do. I know some that do. I can't say how many, but it is something we can enact, but it is our ordinance, so it's up to us to enforce it, so.
I think we can choose to enforce it if we, if we put through an ordinance.
Yeah, we could choose to just say, "We're going to turn the lights off."
It's just not the city of Summit that doesn't have to. It's all municipalities do not have to follow their own rules, their own ordinances.
Councilman Pulowski.
So I haven't really commented on Tatlock Lights from the dais yet, but I have gone to a couple of the meetings and I had a meeting of my own. And what I have consistently said, and Henry, I said this to you last night--
We know what you're doing.
I don't know how that happened, I'm sorry. That violated the three-minute rule.
It's, it's two to two, just a--
You were close to three minutes there.
It's basketball season.
Sorry, I know, is it lacrosse or baseball?
Hockey.
Oh, hockey.
I am, I'm very interested in what all of the folks who live down around Tatlock have to say and what their concerns are. And as I said to Henry last night, I am going to weigh those concerns more than I'm going to weigh the concerns of people who don't live around there. I think that's why the analysis that we're doing is set up in the way that it is. But the question that I've asked Tatlock residents, and I haven't gotten an answer to it yet, is what's the measure of whether we're listening to the Tatlock residents? Is it if we do lights, we didn't listen, and if we don't do lights, we did listen? And is there any in-between? Because I think we have a responsibility to maybe consider an in-between, so.
Can I answer that? I feel like you asked--
No.
No.
I'm so sorry.
There's no back and forth.
This, yeah, this will, this is a longer ongoing discussion, you know. Okay. All right. Are there any other council comments? I would like to take a break for five minutes only because it's the budget hearing and it might take some time. So why don't we take a five-minute break and then--
Can I, just one last thing. My resignation from the Summit Lacrosse Club was not so that I could vote on this eventually. There was no conflict, even if I was still on it. So I just wanted to make that clear because Jocelyn had commented otherwise.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. All right, thank you. All right, we have an ordinance. We don't have everybody.
I still follow--
Just stare at you. Staring at you. We have an ordinance for introduction. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
ID number 11210, ordinance to authorize acquisition of real property between Ashland Road and Oakland Place.
Capital projects, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yes, sorry, just getting back to--
It's okay, sorry. Take your time.
See? Okay. Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance ID 11210, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real properties on the official tax map of the city of Summit. I'm just going to read verbatim because this is a little bit complicated and hard to explain. If there's further questions, I'll pass it along to Director Schreger. Two parcels, blocks 3208 Lot 5, 59 Ashland Road, and block 3207 Lot 5, 57 Linden Place are currently owned by a defunct development company, Summit Homeland Company, for which no successor or entity remains. These parcels were likely created during the original subdivision of the area and they primarily contained walled portions of the Salt Brook in addition to some adjacent unimproved areas. Each is 22 by 300 and contains 6,600 square feet. Earlier this year, our legal team's opinion was that the city holds responsibility for these properties based on the current ownership status, even though the city is not listed as the lawful owner. Previously, the city had an informal practice of removing obstructions in the Salt Brook, including trees within these parcels. Since the city has the responsibility to maintain these parcels, at the time, the department is recommended proceeding with a formal acquisition of these lands so that they can be added to the list of city-owned parcels on the tax maps and MODIV data so that ownership is clearly understood moving forward. This process is completed by proceeding with the ordinance provided. I move to introduce this ordinance.
I second, and I just have a quick comment also, if we can. We just, we don't, we talked about it in the committee, and we have it, but we just don't have the tax map or anything in the packet. We can just post that to the website, or make sure we add it to the next council meeting. And just to, again, point out, the size of it is really, it's 22 feet by 300 feet, right? And it's a very small, it's very small. We're not, you know, we're not taking over a big piece of land here, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I wanted to talk about putting that in the recreation open space inventory for, I guess, record, Director Schreger, if you think that's appropriate, then we could put it in the Rossi for future.
Yeah, once we take ownership, yes.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Mr. Miniger.
Aye.
Mr. Pulaski.
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood.
Aye.
Mr. Barton.
Aye.
President Allen.
Aye, okay. The hearing will be on May 22nd. On to resolutions.
May 21st.
May 21st, thank you, sorry. On to resolutions, Finance, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council President. I think my mic might be low, right? Is my mic low?
What?
Sound okay?
Yeah, you sound good.
Sound great to me.
Uh, thank you. The, um, this is number 11200, and this resolution appoints a new qualified purchasing agent. Per closed-session discussion, the city welcomes Natasha Matasak as the new qualified purchasing agent. Welcome to Natasha. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Excellent. Council comments? I just want to say congratulations. I know it's much needed. Is there any public comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second resolution, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11250, and this is, this resolution appoints our 2024 affirmative action officer and public agency compliance officer. This position is held by the QPA, who we just voted on in the last resolution. So, per closed-session discussion, the city welcomes Natasha Matenak to serve as the purchasing affirmative action officer and public agency compliance officer. Again, welcome Natasha. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Excellent. Any council comments? Public comments?
Just, I just have one, Council President. Obviously, welcome to Natasha, and I also just wanted to say I had some time to speak with Michelle Caputo this week, who'll be leaving us, and obviously wishing her the best. We're losing a lot of knowledge with Michelle, and we, we know Natasha has big shoes to fill, but I will spend as much time with Michelle as I can in the next five to seven days, learning as much as I can if possible, so, congratulations.
Excellent. Okay, public comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Safety and Health, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. Today I have the privilege of introducing resolution 11223 to confirm Detective Ryan Stanek's promotion to the rank of Sergeant. Detective Stanek joined the Summit Police Department in 2007, and over the past 17 years, he has dedicated himself to serving our community with honor, integrity, and a deep commitment to public safety. His career highlights include substantial community involvement and a notable record of reducing crime rates. Detective Stanek has demonstrated leadership through his roles, such as the Summit PBA, Local 55 President, and Assistant Range Master. His proactive approach in general investigations and community policing has significantly enhanced the safety and trust within our community. I'd like to take the time to congratulate now Sergeant Stanek, and I present this resolution for your consideration to support this adoption.
Second.
Excellent. Council comments? Okay, want to say congratulations. Is there any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, Community Programs, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11247, pending closed-session discussion. This is to declare vacancy as Parking Services Director. We recently had Parking Services Director retire, and I moved, moved to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Excellent. Any council comments? Public comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Capital Projects, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution ID 11033, to award the bid for the Community Center ADA Ramp Improvements in the amount of $73,063. The scope of this work includes the installation of an ADA-compliant ramp and access that will link the Community Center to Long Field. It will also reconstruct the access driveways to the field and install two ADA-compliant parking stalls at Long Field. This project has been heavily supported and desired by DCP, and it will be highly utilized during summer camps to vastly improve accessibility to the lower part of the Community Center grounds. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
Excellent. Council comments?
I just have one, because I was looking at this today. Director Schreger, I noticed in the award bid that the award was given to Diamond Construction. When I was looking at the bid specs, I noticed that their costs for the concrete were substantially lower, so I just wanted to take note of that and just make sure it's accurate, so that we don't have any change orders, or, because the other contractors were, obviously, I'm not sure if it was a prevailing wage thing or what it was, but, through you, Council President.
Yeah, through you, Council President. When you, when you look at their bid, you could tell it's apparent what, what they did. Some of their upfront costs, they, they bid higher than the others, which is their way of just trying to get money in advance, and therefore then they lower it on the concrete. So it's just part of the, the strategy that contractors will, will implement. On a project this small, we don't really call it out, we, we understand what they're doing, but that's why their concrete is, is cheaper, so. And it's a risk, because if we use more concrete that's in there, then they would get paid less, so it's just part of the bidding process, so.
Thank you.
Council President, just to piggyback off your question, because now I'm curious. So, is this contractor overbidding? Is it, is that, is that what we're saying? You notice that the contractor overbid? Or, excuse me, the contractor underbid? And then there's a possibility that they will submit a, submit a request for...
Change order.
A change order?
Thank you.
Do you, Council President? So I think first and foremost, we do have the lowest bidder that we are selecting, so it, you know, it is the lowest bidder by the bidding process. No, because they're, they are married essentially to the price they bid for the item that is in the bid. So even if it's less, if they chose to bid less, they're not entitled to get more for what they bid, because they, they gave us a unit price for that material, which in this case would be the concrete. And it's not that their concrete price is, is so outrageous. If it was outrageous, like a penny per yard, that is something we would call out or possibly reject a bid, based on the premise that they, they set their costs on. Otherwise, in this case, they would just be required to, to do more for a very low price, so.
Got you. So we'll keep an eye on the fact that if they submit a change order and the actual bid price is the same as the highest bid price, then you'll, you'll flag that.
Correct. And if they submit a change order, it's for additional work they did, and they'd be entitled to it, but at the price they've already bid. If it's something out of the scope of work, that's where, you know, it's negotiated in terms of what the price would be, so.
Thank you.
Through you, Council President. This one was a little unique, because the concrete costs for the other bidders were, were double, and I thought there was a miscalculation. I thought the award bid was calculating at square yards, and the other one were calculating at square feet, so it was just ironic that it was double, and I thought maybe somebody just made a mistake in their calculations, but that's why I just wanted to confirm.
Director Schreger, is there a threshold of change orders? So like, if you have three bidders, someone comes in low, the lowest, we choose them based on that price? Is there a threshold that we say, you, we can't do change orders over a certain dollar amount, so that we don't get in a situation where two people who lost out on high bids come back and say, "Wait a minute, that third bidder was the lowest, and now they're at the highest, because we did so many change orders." How do you, yeah, what's that threshold, how do you manage that?
Yes, the contract law allows us to go 20% over the, the actual total price that's bid. There are exceptions, you could get to if it's justifiable, but, but in that regards, yes, within 20% is still fine. If you get into other quantities, yes, other, other bidders could challenge a bid even after the fact, based on what's happened after it was awarded, so. But in this case, we should point out, though some items might be different, I mean, your low bidder was 73, and the next two bidders were 76, so it's, it's really just, this is competitive bidding, which is what happens when you do it early spring. So, so this is actually very good prices.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments? Nope, okay, public comment? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yes, this is resolution ID 11133, which will award bid curbside collection and marketing of recycling materials July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2026. Whereas the Superintendent of Public Works recommends awarding the bid received on March 28th, 2024, for curbside collection and marketing of recycling materials to grand sanitation for Item 2, single-stream, weekly pickup, five days per week of residential and school and governmental buildings, for a two-year term, July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2026. The cost of said service is $1,790,000 for a two-year term, and funds for July 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2024, in the amount of $447,500 will be certified upon inclusion and, and in adoption of the 2024 operating budget from account number 4-01-26305001512. I'd like to move this resolution.
I second.
Any other council comments? Public comments? Please state your name and address.
Thank you, Council President. Danny O'Sullivan, 33 Crescent. So, curbside recycling is broken. Single-stream, everything in one truck, paper, whether it's wet or not, going into the truck, glass going in, mail going in. We don't do, do it that way at the transfer station. When you go to the transfer station, it's very strict. You bring cardboard, it goes right into a truck or a bin, and if it's going to rain, they put a cover on it. So, it's just, I think we want to do the right thing as, as residents, and we want to recycle and, and, you know, follow the law and all of that, but it's not working. And it's frustrating to know that 90% of our plastic is getting incinerated, that this wet cardboard that sits out all night, it's useless, it's trash. If you have a greasy pizza box, it's trash. So how is it that all of this cardboard's going into a truck, a single-stream truck, and getting embedded with glass, getting crushed together, how is that getting recycled? So, we're not going to solve it tonight, but some of you will be here for a couple of more years when this contract is coming up again, and we just need creative solutions to figure out, what are we doing? It's not working, it's just, we're just paying $895,000 a year to throw other trash away, some, I don't know what they're doing with it. It's not, it's not being made, you're not walking into a Target and buying a hairbrush from all the Poland Spring bottles that they recycled. I mean, it's just not working that way. So, I just would like to see some creative thinking on this over the next one and a half years, as this comes up again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think that's a great point, and I'm curious, I'm not, I've not been on the recycling committee or anything, but I would welcome Mr. O'Sullivan for you to get back involved and, and take the lead on something like that, if whoever's the subject matter expert, because it's been bothering, I think, Councilman Smallwood, I think all of us, we don't want to waste taxpayer money, so if we have some great ideas, Director Schreger, maybe you can, do you have anything? Is this the way we've been doing it for how long, and are there any better municipal opportunities out there?
Well, first, through you, Council President, you know, we are required to recycle, and I think just trying to put a positive spin on this, we did maintain grand sanitation, and the, the price was far less of an increase than we would have expected with inflation, et cetera. So just at least in the short term, that is a win for the city. Overall, the, the problem is much larger than the City of Summit, I mean, it is, is really nationwide, and since China stopped accepting a lot of our recycled waste, there does need to be bigger assistance from the state and federal level, I agree. We have looked internally at other options, whether it's collecting on our own, requiring people to bring it to the transfer station individually, so there are a lot of options there. I'm happy to, to start looking at other options moving forward, but for now, the primary option we have is to, is to collect at curbside. And once it is collected curbside, the, the company, in this case, Grand Sanitation, does own it, so what they do with it is they have to follow the laws to, to sort it, and how they do that is, is up to them, but, but I do agree globally, it's something that we should look at, and if Summit can, can take part in that at a local level, that would be great.
Thank you.
Council President? Mr. O'Sullivan, I'm 100% in agreement with you. I know that on the recycling committee, they're working on some, just within our own transfer station, they're working on some marketing pieces that we're going to be able to use through the city website, and trying to get out and educate as many people as possible of what is recyclable, what's not recyclable. And it goes, it's a huge learning experience for me, in terms of the types of plastics that, that's recyclable. I'm still going through it, and it's a little, goes over my head, but, you know, we have a gentleman on the recycling committee that knows exactly what is acceptable and what's not acceptable, and he's working on a marketing piece to tell us what they're, like, plastics, if it's, if it's like, if it sounds like tinfoil, it's not, or if it is, or if it's not, if it's, if it's crinkly, it is, or it isn't. But it's also talking about the, the cardboard as well. I would actually like to go to Plainfield to visit the Grand Sanitation, is it the Grand Sanitation Service, is it the name of the company?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I would actually like to take a trip down there, maybe you could join me, and to see how they actually operate, and what actually gets, whatever, what actually gets recycled, and what gets put into the incinerator. Because I agree, if we're, if we're spending $800,000 on recycling, and it's not being recycled, we're wasting money.
Can I just, one, one quick, two quick things? So there's the macro level of recycling, right? Which is like, this used to be a great source of revenue for the city, and now it's $895,000 a year, right? So that's obviously, obviously there's a problem there. But, but at the, at the very micro level of recycling, grand is a big, big improvement over, over the previous vendor, and, you know, we were talking about this the other day, if you wind up behind them in your car, right? You're going to be like, a little bit more frustrated, because it's like, what, what's taking them so long? And it's, they're taking their time, right? And they're, and they're putting the, they're being a little bit careful, and they're, most of the time, get the bins back onto the curb, and I think that's like, at a day-to-day thing, if you don't have to run out into the street and grab your recycling bin, I think that's a good thing, and I think that's a nice win to be celebrated, so, thank you.
Excellent, okay. Anyone else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is, is this my, my third one? Yep, that's it, I've had so many, I can't extract. Resolution number 10974, authorizing grant application submission and execution grant agreement for the 2024 NJBPU CEP implementation grant program. Whereas a sustainable community seeks to ensure that its environmental, economic, and social objectives are balanced and mutually supportive, the City of Summit strives to assure clean land, air, and water for current and future generations. Whereas New Jersey's Energy Master Plan Pathway to 2050, established that community-level action is necessary to achieve the state's goal of 100% clean, clean energy by 2050, and that the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities has created a community energy implementation grant program for municipalities to implement initiatives identified in their community energy, energy plan, or a plan equivalent to a CEP that has been approved. I'd like to move this resolution.
Second.
Excellent. Council comments?
Just real, really, well, you could go first.
I just wanted to say that the, I think we noticed that the, the actual application that's in your packet tonight is the old one, which has a date that is not correct for submission, which we found, so if we could just attach the correct one to the minutes, Director Schreger. It looks like we're on time for submitting this, it's fine. Correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, I believe the date is May twenty-fourth.
Correct. May twenty-fourth? Sorry, I was reading. May twenty-fourth. Thank you. All right.
Just very quickly, Council President. So, our community energy plan was adopted at the end of last year. Basically, what that is, is that it outlines actual concrete initiatives that the city can partake, that the city can implement and participate in over the next ten years. This is what seems, I think, like the first round of grants associated with that. So, that's good. Thank you.
And that was Donna Cotel.
Yeah, the Environmental Commission created the community energy plan and has been helpful in this grant application.
Excellent.
Yeah. Thank you, Donna.
Yeah, thank you, Donna. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution ID one one two four eight, authorizing the grant application submission and execute grant agreement for all U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads. Whereas the U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for all SS4A program provides federal funding to support planning, infrastructure, behavioral, and operational initiatives to prevent death and serious injury on roads and streets involving all roadway users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, public transportation, personal conveyance, and micro mobility users, motorists, and commercial vehicle operators. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Summit formally approves the application to the above stated grant program for a minimum amount of a hundred thousand dollars for a planning and demonstration grant to create an action plan for the city of Summit. And I'm looking to see if there is a match. Well, I'd like to move this resolution.
Second.
Council comments? Public comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Final resolution, Councilwoman.
And that one does, it looks like that does have a twenty percent match, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Okay. Okay. Give me a minute. Okay. Final one. This is resolution ID one one two three five. Grant permission set forth conditions for the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad sign display on city property. That permission is hereby granted to the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad to display membership, drive, promotional signs in various locations on city property from Wednesday, May eighth, 2024, through Saturday, June eighth, at the Village Green near the YMCA, the Village Green at the corner of Summit Avenue and Broad Street, Union Place Roundabout, and the transfer station by the railroad overpass. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
Excellent. Council comments? Public comments? Okay.
Just very quickly, what the signs are, what the signs are encouraging people to do is join the first aid squad, so I can't possibly recommend doing that highly enough. Go on their website, check it out, take a ride along. Changed my life. Thank you.
I saw John in the, John's not here anymore, right? Okay, okay. Excellent. Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next up is our budget hearing. I'm going to kick it over to Administrator Rogers.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate the opportunity to speak before the public hearing. So, while a great deal of tangible work product has been created to educate the elected officials and public about the 2024 municipal budget, I believe it is necessary to restate some basic information and thoughts about it. The introduced 2024 municipal budget reflects the city's commitment to preserve its sound financial position and enhance quality of life through efficient allocation and management of limited resources while being mindful of its long-range fiscal capacity and strategic debt management practices. Further, the municipal budget delivers on the city's high-level service goals and provides significant funding for capital improvements to rebuild, repair, and improve city infrastructure and facilities to meet community needs. The 2024 municipal budget is a policy document that establishes a strong operational plan, provides essential public services, and responsibly meets other financial obligations. Budget preparation was particularly challenging this year, given that various appropriation increases outweighed available non-tax revenue sources. Competing interests and scarce resources always present challenges in balancing the city's annual budget. Like every preceding budget year, the Common Council Finance Committee carefully examined the 2024 annual operating budget and capital improvement project requests submitted by city department heads and division managers. After extensive review and discussion, the Finance Committee, Capital Projects Committee, and key city staff formulated an annual financial plan that sufficiently balances operational needs with prudent stewardship of public monies. Please allow me to provide some financial facts about this budget. The 2024 municipal tax rate is rising to ninety-two cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation, which is two cents higher than the 2023 municipal rate. Two cents is the same municipal tax rate increase realized in the 2023 municipal budget. The municipal tax levy increase needed to balance the 2024 budget is one point four seven million dollars. This is a five percent increase from the 2023 municipal tax levy. While this tax levy increase is the largest amount needed to balance the city's budget in many years, property owners will not realize a five percent or a five cent increase in their municipal taxes. As fully explained during my April second municipal budget presentation, in the municipal budget snapshot delivered to every property owner about two weeks ago, and in the voluminous budget document produced for the elected officials and the public that is posted on the city's website, the city's tax-based valuation growth of eighty-two million dollars will generate about seven hundred and forty-one thousand in new municipal tax revenue. This seven hundred and forty-one thousand of new municipal tax revenue will provide just over fifty percent of the one point four seven million of tax revenue required to balance the budget. The remaining municipal tax revenue needed, approximately seven hundred and twenty thousand five fifty-seven, to balance the budget will be raised from the existing tax-based valuation. This is why every property owner will see the municipal portion of their tax bill rise by two point three percent or two cents. In comparison, the 2024 municipal tax rate percentage increase is lower than the two point five percent increase in 2023. Even with the one point four seven million tax levy increase, the city's budget is well under the state's property tax levy cap law by three hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars. Municipalities always want to realize tax-based valuation growth. Property owners want to see this happen with their own respective property value. Annual new tax-based valuation increases generate new tax revenue. The city of Summit has been very fortunate to see consistent, significant tax-based valuation increases since 2017. Over the last seven years, the average tax-based valuation growth was thirty-five million dollars. In 2023, the city's budget benefited from a thirty-four point seven million dollar increase in its tax base whereby it reduced the one million thirty thousand, one point zero three million, or three point six percent increase in the municipal tax levy by about three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Thus, the remaining tax revenue needed to balance the 2023 budget was about seven hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars or two point five percent. Summit's average residential assessment value is four hundred and thirty-five thousand six forty-eight. In 2024, using this average residential assessment value, a homeowner will likely see an estimated one hundred and sixty-three dollar increase in their total tax bill, of which ninety-two dollars is the municipal portion. For every one hundred thousand of residential valuation assessment, a property owner should anticipate an estimated thirty-seven dollar increase in their total tax bill, or a twenty-one dollar increase in the municipal portion of their tax bill. For comparison purposes, in 2023, the same property owner saw a hundred and ninety dollar increase in their total tax bill, of which one hundred dollars was the municipal portion. Again, to clear up any misunderstanding, the estimated 2024 tax bill change will be lower than what Summit property owners experienced in 2023. My last point about the 2024 municipal budget is regarding the capital budget. The primary challenge of the annual capital budget is to balance priorities with fiscal constraints. Similar to an annual operating budget, a capital budget requires difficult decisions. The nature and importance of individual capital project requests will likely determine those that will be accomplished in the respective budget year and those that can be deferred to future years. Over the last several years, the city has deferred many projects to future years because of rising debt service obligations. In fact, in 2022 and 2023, the city's capital budgets were two point one million and one point nine million respectively. Last year was the lowest capital budget in decades. That budget level is unsustainable, given the growing number of capital projects deferred for years. From 2014 to 2021, the average capital budget amount was seven point two million dollars. So, the 2024 capital budget amount of four million dollars is well below that average, even though it is double the historically low capital budget amount in 2023. In closing, I would like to thank the mayor and common council for all their hard work during this budget process, and strongly recommend that the 2024 municipal budget, as introduced on April second, be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Rogers. Councilman Miniger, I'd like to just say something. Do you mind?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank everybody and kind of set the context. So, tonight, we're going to be discussing the municipal budget for 2024, and as Council President, I want to underscore the deep commitment by this council to deliver a budget that balances fiscal constraint with responsible investing in city resources. Making budget decisions is never easy, but this year, just as years passed, the Finance Committee, under Councilman Miniger's guidance, worked every Thursday for four months to identify where we could cut, save, and prioritize, so we wouldn't burden our residents more than necessary. Nobody likes a tax increase, especially knowing that inflation is hitting our pocketbooks in every aspect of our lives. But unfortunately, City Hall is not immune to inflation as well. Similar to last year, it's important to highlight that despite some challenges, our budget this year stayed under the two percent cap. Our human, so what did we focus on? As former Councilman Vartan mentioned in his Facebook Live last year with chair at the time of Finance, Councilman Miniger, the two largest departments that touch and impact everyone's life in Summit are public safety and community services. That's why we are investing in both this year. Our human capital and our construction capital, our valued employees, the buildings, the roads, and support systems that our cities run on. This year's budget process, under Councilman Miniger's direction, mirrors last year's process and reflects our dedication to ensuring the consistency and excellence of municipal services our residents rely on. Recognizing employees as valuable assets and enabling them to be successful in their jobs directly correlates with their ability to serve our community happily and effectively. Throughout 2023, one common concern we continually heard from the community was safety, and we are investing in our police force. This decision not only enhances our community's security, but it also supports our police in meeting the growing and challenging needs of our city. A couple of years ago, a previous councilman stated that we really squeeze out every ounce of shelf life from our assets, whether it's our cars, equipment, and furniture, and that case still remains the same today. That's why this year, in our pursuit of responsible management of our city fiscal resources, Administrator Rogers requested a position for a new facility manager. The role will oversee more than forty million dollars in assets that until now have been managed in a decentralized way. Rest assured, this person will be out in the field and hands-on. Our aim is to create a budget that mirrors the priorities of this community, because we're listening, learning, and working every day to make sound decisions fiscally and otherwise. Once again, I would like to thank our Finance Chair, Councilman Miniger, who has brought two years of experience to this budget process. I'd like to thank Mayor Fagan, Councilwoman Hamlet, all for your hard work. Councilwoman Hamlet, you really dig into numbers and turn everything inside out to understand them. Administrator Rogers, CFO Tammy Baldwin, and all the department heads who met with us, worked on the budget. Your expertise and strategic guidance have been crucial in shaping what I believe is a responsible budget. Both Councilman Miniger and Councilman Vartan collectively have five years of experience on the Finance Committee as chairs, and have stated many times, this process is exhaustive, transparent, and head and shoulders above other towns, and I completely agree. They are right, and Tammy, I hope you get a good night's rest tonight. It's been six months. Finally, I'd like to recognize all the citizens who have sent in emails and who I've spoken to about the budget, happy or not. I appreciate the engagement, and I appreciate and thank you for your interest. Whether it was Kevin McGoy or Diego, with all your questions, I've learned a ton, and I have a true appreciation of the nuances of the budget. So, thank you again. Let's continue to work together to ensure our city remains a wonderful place to live, work, and thrive. And Councilman Miniger, the floor is yours. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Council President. In December, our Council President asked me to be the Chair of the Finance Committee. I saw last year what it takes to be a Chair of Finance. I was Chair of Finance last year, and ideally, you are involved in discussions that help you shape the budget, or at minimum, aware of how that budget is being created. You have to be a champion for the budget you're working on, and you've got to be in the loop. I told our Council President that when we discussed it back in December. In January, we received the operating budget requests from every department. Our police chief requested an increase in overtime for his officers, which I was in total support of, given his use of overtime in the prior year. I realized very quickly that I was out of the loop, which is what I feared would be the case, when changes were being made to the operating budget that I had no idea about them. I was not being made aware of the direction this budget was taking. And in February, we were presented with the operating budget. It was clear then that this budget was created outside of the Finance Committee. When I asked if it was possible to aim for a much lower percentage increase, like one percent or zero percent tax increase, I was told that the days of sub-two percent tax increases are over. When I pushed back that we were adding too many employees, a total of four full-time, pensionable employees, my request to make trade-offs somewhere was not honored. Chief Zagorski requested additional officers a second time around, and his letter to our committee was very compelling. I support one hundred percent our police chief's request for two additional officers. But one of the jobs of the Finance Committee, I thought, was to make trade-offs, so you don't have to make an expensive city even more expensive for years to come. We should have met somewhere in the middle. There was no meeting in the middle on this. When I asked what the purpose of being the Chair of the Finance Committee is in this context, when I essentially have no influence at all over these discussions, I was told that it would be nice to have the Finance Chair support this budget, but that it would be presented to council regardless. This budget was made for the majority, period. One of the duties, one of my duties of that Finance Committee was to run a meeting, which I did. Also, as Finance Chair, a duty of mine is to introduce this budget, so I did that back in April. And now I'm going to carry out another duty as Finance Chair, which is to open the hearing, and that's where my support for this budget ends. I move to open the hearing.
I'd like to second it with a few comments. Mr. Giacobi, is that okay? I'd like to address a few of your comments, Councilman Miniger, but I'll go ahead and say what I had to say in a positive light beforehand. That is, that I thank the Finance Committee and our city staff members, CFO Tammy Baldwin, and our staff, City Administrator Michael Rogers, and the entire city staff. Thank you for working so hard all of those Thursdays. I'm excited to put my binders away. For all of you that don't know, every year, there's a binder this big, and the tabs are identical. They're literally identical. So, whoever makes these, I'm not sure who makes them, but thank you, because I went back in the last two days, and it's really interesting to compare. And when you dig into this three-hundred-page document and you backtrack six, eight years, it's a really, really good history lesson. So, thank you for whoever makes these binders. They don't go to waste. I want everyone to appreciate that the budget is a culmination of several of years. It's easy to look at just this year's budget and look at capital costs. However, most of you can appreciate that it's far more complex than that. I was a bit disheartened at the last meeting when some of my colleagues questioned the overall methodology in which we came to a two percent increase. As Michael Rogers just mentioned, many of the previous capital budgets have historically been between four and five million dollars. One of the highest capital budgets was in 2019 at sixteen million nineteen thousand. I began to take a deeper look at the last five-year forecast for the capital budget starting in 2021. So, in 2021, the only councilperson up here was Councilman Vartan. In 2021, the council at the time forecasted that the capital budget for the years 2022 to 2026 was five point three eight million dollars. And we just learned from our city administrator, which I didn't know, from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty, it was seven point two?
Yeah, up until, yeah, twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay. So, somewhere around there. So, that gives me the confidence that previous councils fully understood the resources, staff, and capital improvements that it takes to run the city the size of Summit, a city the size of Summit. In fact, as Lisa Allen just mentioned in the budget meeting in 2021, former Councilman Daniel Sullivan, with the great recycling ideas tonight, highlighted how we exhaust the life out of our assets, our vehicles, our equipment, our showmobile, and we are not recklessly spending money. We have similar thoughts. However, around 2022 and 2023, you see a massive decline in the capital budget numbers. The capital budgets for those years were two point one four, and in 2023, one point nine nine one. Those two years were historical outliers. Our city administrator made a recommendation to take a serious halt in any spending for those years in order to reduce long-term debt obligations from large projects like the community center and the firehouse. I applaud him in those efforts and appreciate this gives us more flexibility this year in returning to an appropriate capital budget to run a city the size of Summit. This year, in 2024, our debt service payment is six point five million. With that being said, we must be mindful of our capital projects and resources going forward. In regards to your comments tonight, Councilman Miniger, in the meeting in which Chief Zagorski presented his operating budget, I specifically asked, the mayor was there, the CFO Tammy Baldwin was there, and the city administrator was there. I said, I am aware that the department requested more officers in their committee meetings. Why aren't we talking about that right now? I specifically asked that question, and I specifically wanted to keep you in the loop. You were clearly not for the police officers because you had questions, which is fine, and that's understandable. So, we had our CFO create a pension memo, and we all became comfortable. But you bet we wanted to hire more officers. That's why this council is up here. The public wanted more officers. You bet we wanted more officers. We weren't backing down on that, but we never had a conversation around it until that day in January, which we were all there. So, you bet we wanted more safety, and you bet we wanted more police officers.
Thank you.
I second this resolution.
Matt?
Yes, you may. Let me, okay. I'm going to go to Councilman Miniger. I'll let him respond, and then I'm going to go around the dais. It's all right. Oh, wait, is my second accepted? Oh, is your second accepted?
Matt?
You, no.
She seconded to open the hearing.
You seconded to open the hearing.
You seconded to open the hearing. Open the hearing.
Okay, I just want to make sure it was accepted.
Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. So, I am thrilled that we got the chief what he asked for. What I want to know is, were you on the Safety Committee?
I was not on the Safety Committee, but...
How did you know about it before I did? I was not in the loop on any of these things. I found out about it in, like, in hearsay. I found out a mention of it from Michael, like, an hour before that meeting. This is stuff that you talk about to the Chair of your Finance Committee. You talk about this stuff with him. That's how you craft a budget together. So that's the main thing. We could have planned the trade-offs to make that happen a lot easier, and I think that that's what was lacking.
Okay, well, I'm sorry you feel that way. And I don't know when I found out, but I knew that, I think, we had talked about, at least in 2023, that we needed more officers in front of 22,000 residents. So I thought maybe that would be a priority.
Councilman Boyer?
So, I don't even know where to start. Is my mic on here?
Yeah.
The mics are... But in terms of officers, I'm glad that we're all on the same page. I don't have to sit up here and defend the hiring of two more officers. But I will say that during the campaign, almost every speech that I gave, I said on day one, "I'm going to ask for more officers." It wasn't a secret. It wasn't a secret to anyone on the council here. And to me, it was something that, in my head, was like non-negotiable, right? Every meeting I had, I said, "What is the plan for our officers?" So much so that people were tired of me saying it. I mean, it was every single safety meeting. It was definitely a priority. The reason why it was a priority is because Summit currently operates with a 47 full-time sworn officers, equating to a rate of 2.06 officers per 1,000 residents. The national average is 2.4 officers per 1,000. When compared to our neighboring towns, Cranford, 54; Westfield, 62 officers, that's 2.0 per 1,000; and Millburn, strikingly, 57 officers per 1,000 residents. That's 2.84. Actually, I was just talking to a council member in Millburn, and, you know, they just hired two more. So they were at 55, and they hired two more this year. So their commitment to public safety is undeniable. I was actually watching the video from last year, the budget meeting, and both Councilwoman Hamlet and Council President Allen both said that they would like to see more officers in the budget for this year. And, but why, right? So reports of motor vehicle thefts in the last couple of years increased by 117%. Residential burglaries, which I actually went over last, a couple of council meetings ago, residential burglaries up by 126% over the last few years. This surge underscores the urgent need for an expanded police force. The department used 2,232 man-hours of overtime to deploy additional officers for precision patrolling. These efforts led to the arrest of 26 individuals suspected of burglary and car thefts. Now, this definitely leads to a reduction in death, right? So despite the high attempts, the actual theft of vehicles decreased by 40% compared to the previous year. But there was a result in this operation, and the resulting was substantial costs. 605 hours of comp time and overtime expenses totaling $167,000. Lastly, I mean, research supports the fact that adding more officers, and this is a Wharton School, University of Pennsylvania, right? Communities with better-funded and adequately-staffed police departments tend to have higher home values. I mean, that makes common sense. When you're looking for a home, it could be aesthetically pleasing, but when you scroll down and the schools are no good and there's high crime, you're not going to buy the house, right? That makes perfectly sense. That's why your home values are really high, because you have good schools and you want to maintain a good police force. Now, these two officers, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Zagorski, they will be going to the Patrol Bureau. So enhancing our patrol capabilities provides a more immediate response to calls and a visible deterrent in the key areas of crime. But I want to talk about, can I say something about the budget? Well, this is my justification for hiring officers. I didn't think it would be that easy, to be honest. As a councilman, I want to emphasize the profound significance of our public budgeting process. It's not merely about tallying expenses or adjusting last year's figures. It is a profound statement of our community's priorities and values. When we allocate funds, we are explicitly stating what matters to us as a city. If parks are declared as a priority, well, the budget should reflect that, and you should see a significant investment in park development and maintenance. Otherwise, our stated priorities come into question. The public budget is our most powerful tool for policy implementation. It's not just numbers on a page. It's a blueprint for the future. Every dollar allocated is a step towards realizing our collective vision for the community. Engaging with the budget means looking beyond the surface. As elected officials, we were chosen to effect change and fulfill promises. If we are committed to enhancing public safety, community wellness, or education, our budget must align with those objectives. Adjusting our financial plan is essential to achieving these goals. Although enhancing our police force to meet the challenges of modernity is not explicitly listed as a goal, our budget reflects our commitment to this objective. As taxpayers, you deserve to know that your contributions are being utilized. One of the primary ways to demonstrate this is through the budget document itself, which should clearly articulate what we have achieved and what we aim to accomplish moving forward. Moreover, as we move forward and think about our priorities for the next budget, I encourage my fellow councilmembers and city staff to not only manage the budget effectively, but also think innovatively about how we can save and reallocate resources without diminishing services. Rewarding departments for finding savings can encourage efficiency and enhance our ability to fund essential projects without additional taxpayer burden. As we approach each financial year, fiscal year, excuse me, it's imperative to focus on outcomes, not just outputs. We need to ask ourselves not only what we are achieving with the resources allocated, but also why these achievements matter. This outcome-focused approach will ensure that our budgeting process contributes meaningful, is meaningful, to the quality of life in our community. And when we look at the goals this year, we look at expanding programs by partnering with nonprofits for developing and constructing affordable housing. Strengthening enforcement of housing codes to ensure safe and livable conditions. Provide support to the Summit Housing Authority in its renewal of public housing citywide. Develop a comprehensive public awareness campaign to inform residents of available affordable housing options. Offer support services for financial literacy and home buyers' education. Like, these things we add as goals, but we need to really see it happen. When we were talking about affordable housing and we were talking about the firehouse space, my heart truly is with affordable housing and low-income housing, you know? I would like to see low-income housing in Summit, somewhere. I'm going to be perfectly honest about that. Dennis Place, Weaver Street, Glenwood, they affected people's lives. I know people who wouldn't be here without those places and those environments. And if we're going to put this down as a goal, we need to see that happen. Now, listen, it might not be at the fireplace, I mean, the firehouse. I get that. But as a community and as a council, we need to see it somewhere. We need to partner with the Summit Housing Authority. We need to help them rebuild the, and I don't want to use this term, but I am, the dilapidated conditions that they live in right now. It's unacceptable. We have doors that need to be painted, doorbells that don't work, grass that is uneven that kids can't play on, sidewalks that are chipped. But when you go up to Blackburn or Prospect, they have beautiful sidewalks. There is a hidden structure in our town that is hidden. You can't see it. It's hidden by the bank, there's shrubberies, right? But in the middle of it, there's a place that doesn't look like Summit. And we owe it to our current residents to do something about it. Now, if this budget that we have right here and these goals, and we're committed to affordable housing, then it really should reflect what we do this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other council comments?
I just have a quick one, if anybody else doesn't want to go. I think it's important to note that in 2023, the adopted police salary and wage was $5,771,000. Sorry, I apologize. The adopted in 2022 was $6 million. It then went down to $5.7 million. Chief, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm just looking at my sheet. But if you look at the actual fluctuations, the number where we're at now for salary and wage is just a little bit above, at $6.244. So I guess I would ask Director, Administrator Rogers, what's the actual number for the taxpayer in adding to police? It's very insignificant this year, obviously. But it's not the biggest piece of why the budget rose. And I'd like to talk a little bit about why the capital budget rose.
Are you talking about just the difference between 2023 and 2024's salary and wage line?
Yes.
So that's...
The COLA, COLA specifically.
All right, well, so, okay. So in 2023, the adopted police department budget did not reflect a cost-of-living adjustment because the city was in the process of negotiating a collective bargaining agreement. So that amount, we had in a reserve, so it just didn't reflect it in the 2023 adopted budget. That additional money, that's roughly, it's about $130,000 that is showing up in the 2024 budget that really is related to 2023 cost-of-living adjustment. So that sort of is a part of that $473,000 that's increasing. So that's part of it. And then retirements and just changeover, that kind of brought that overall budget down in the salary-wage area. But now we're kind of replenishing our staff, and that's where we are, and there's natural step increases. We put together in the budget report, we show for every group, FMBA, PBA, Teamsters, non-union, what the cost-of-living adjustments are this year versus last year, and the step increases, longevity. And that's what reflects really the salary and wage increase, overall increase of about $533,000. So that's for the entire organization. So that's what we try to provide and enlighten people. It's just pure transparency that I believe in, and it just requires looking at all the information and trying to piece it together. I know it's a lot.
Pre-Council President, Administrator Rogers, for the two officers, minus medical pension, I don't think they contribute for the first couple of years. I have $116,000 for the year one.
So the salary, just for salaries alone, we have two full-year salaries for the new hires. That's about $115,000. They contribute a pension. It's just that it's not reflected in the employer's number for two years, so it's a lagging amount. What we're paying this year in 2024 is for 2022 salaries.
Okay. Councilman Smallwood?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So, I mean, in terms of Councilman Miniger supporting our police officers and the hiring of them, it's the only hiring that you actually mentioned.
Oh, the other two are the facilities manager, and I believe somebody else working in facilities as well.
No, that's actually in Sewer. He went to Sewer, so it doesn't count.
And so I believe our facilities manager is actually already an employee as part-time and becoming a full-time.
No, no, that's not correct.
Oh, that's not...
No, that's a, it's a new position. It's vacant currently.
Okay.
The other position that was turned into, from a part-time to full-time position, he was a, it was a lead inspector that is now a full-time, you know, lead inspector code enforcement, which we were in dire need of. That's the additional.
So, last year, in 2023, the actual paid or charged as of 12/31/2023 from our police department, $356,118 in overtime. The actual requested 2023 budget was $225,000, but we actually spent $356,000, which I'm assuming is why the department requested in 2024, $365,000 in overtime, which was actually being proposed, which is, that was requested, what's being proposed is $285,000. So, I mean, are we paying in overtime, or are we... What's better for our police officers? To pay them in overtime or to give them some support? I understand your concerns about the pensionable salaries, but, I mean, we're over, in 2023, we went over $153,000 in overtime. That's putting added stress on our own police force.
I agree.
Right?
Yeah.
So they clearly need some help. And, you know, for an officer of one year, you know, I believe it's roughly, including health insurance, dental, and pen, or there's no actual pension, correct, Michael? The first year?
Not, no cost to the employer.
Right. Is, so, including the physical examination, drug screening, uniform equipment, and body armor is going to be roughly $87,000 for one police officer, right? We went over budget on our overtime by $153,000. I mean, it's, however you want to look at it, we're spending the money. And I'd rather, rather than putting the stress on our existing officers, give them some additional help. And I understand over a long period of time, over a 10-year period of time, that roughly $87,000 in year one goes to $202,000, which includes pension, health insurance, dental insurance, which, over a period each year, increases every year for our pension. But what are we going to do if we don't hire these officers? Are we going to keep increasing our overtime budget?
Sure. So you and I are speaking the exact same language here. So everything you said is the reason that I loved the letter from Chief Zagorski. So we, I went into this meeting thinking, "All right, so we're going to increase, we're going to increase overtime hugely." Not this meeting, I mean, our meetings. We're going to increase overtime hugely. And the chief said, "Yeah, we needed that because we were deploying them through..." That's how the existing officer's being paid. The thing that changed my mind was in Chief Zagorski's letter. He said that there is, it's not just about, you know, availability of officers to take advantage of overtime. It's extra money for them, but there's a component of morale, and that was huge. That was like, "Well, okay." You cannot argue against that, and I would never do that. So two officers, yeah, I think it's fantastic. We have to keep in mind that there is, what I was pushing for was a trade-off there, man. Because if you're talking long-term, yes, what priority? So you spend money on it long-term, do it. But you've got to do something else. And that was what I felt was not, it was not met. It wasn't, my request for us to trade off in some way was not met.
But I mean, I believe that by hiring these two police officers, I would assume that our overtime budget is going to be reduced significantly.
Correct. That's also, that's a given. The two officers, you would think that they wouldn't have. What I'm worried about, and I need to ask Chief about this, if we didn't get a chance to talk fully about this, is how long it takes to train these two officers, and will that amount of overtime cover the officers who are currently in place? Let's say, I'm guessing, I may have heard this from you, six months? If there's a six-month training period before they can be fully on the job?
It's a little less than that.
Okay. Are we good with the amount of overtime that is currently in the appropriations for those who will be taking over in those first six months? for those who will be taking over in those first six months, or sorry, for four months?
You won't see a significant decrease in overtime early on, because I said that they'll be the training component. But moving, you know, moving past that, like, you know, three to four month period, you'll see that greatly reduced. For example, in my letter, $141,000 of our overtime was spent specifically for precision patrolling in residential areas to deal with the car thefts and the burglaries. With the two new officers, I estimate that that would easily be reduced by at least 70%. Because we, you know, I deployed with that overtime, you know, we deployed what would be equivalent to, you know, more than two officers. So with these two officers, though, that would impact that significantly.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. That, yeah, so it's all, that entire section made sense to me. It's just figuring out a way to make that, to make a trade-off. Trade-off is a big deal. We did, there's, when it comes to capital budgets, when it comes to the operating stuff, when it comes to the pension stuff, I think there's, there's needs to be, there needs to be trade-offs, and it has to come from Finance Committee.
But when you say trade-off, trade-off within the police department, or trade-off within other departments?
Anywhere. So anywhere you're, anywhere you're, so if it's, if you're, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's anywhere that can affect, that can offset the extra costs to the public. I think it was very important to look at, very important to focus on, that's why I did.
Well, we took out $1.6 million in tatlock lights.
I'm glad we did.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
I mean, I think at the end of the day, what this capital budget presents for all of you is the confidence in knowing that we're back to an appropriate capital budget. We have literally been ignoring parks and playgrounds for years. I spoke with Director Ozerowski today. We went back in the budget binders from 2020, and I said, Mark, I think you asked for tatlock playground in 2020. It's 2024. So it's just so interesting to go back and look at his requests. And I said, did you get anything approved? And we kind of went back, and he said, well, I got, you know, we got the tatlock basketball courts done, and we kind of went through, we got the track done. But when you look over the years, there are certainly projects that we just haven't been able to do. And I think that the facilities manager is such a crucial role. Chris, Chris Holstein, right now, is playing a huge role. Mark can speak to it later. Right now, he manages most of our turf, most of our baseball fields, so many of our facilities. And, you know, as our CFO, Tammy Baldwin, would say, a city the size of Summit, running all of these operations absolutely should, it would be appropriate to have a facilities manager in desperately needed. And I think Director Schreger could speak to that as well. But I fully support all three new employees. Again, the part, the other employee will be covered in sewer utility. But I fully support this capital budget and all of the personnel, and I hope that the city staff feels supported.
I just want to say this, too. So we're hiring three new employees, two are police, and one we're proposing is the facility manager.
It's a staff assistant that was part-time going to full-time, who's in the sewer utility.
Who's in the sewer utility. So that doesn't hit our...
There's the facilities manager, and then there's the two police officers.
Right. And so the facilities manager, one thing I just wanted to say is that Aaron Schreger, if anybody knows, is one person doing two jobs, two full-time jobs. When I came on council, I think it was 2021, early February, and at the time, we had made Aaron, we promoted him from engineer to director, but he also kept the engineering role as interim. So since almost three years, you can confirm that for me, Aaron has been doing two full-time jobs, and the city is exploding with work. So I have to say that, you know, I would almost say that we need to figure out that job. And having a facility manager, for me, was definitely a reason why I would support hiring, you know, someone for you. I just feel like you're, everybody is so inundated, but zoning and engineering and DPW has a ton going on. So I don't know if you want to say anything about that, Director Schreger?
No, I appreciate that, and thank you for your support. But, you know, primarily the city is evolving right now, and the department's willing to take on what's required of it, but we do need, we do need help. So, and one area, we're not that strong, is our facilities. And as we move forward, we definitely see a shifting that the fields will ultimately come back to DPW, but we don't have a person to do that, including the municipal pool and the golf course. That's in addition to what we identify as the 45 facilities that we do own and maintain right now. Now, don't panic, we don't have 45 buildings. Some of those are dugouts or the Sentinel Tree down on Broad Street. But overall, we do have 45. And I think we're very fortunate that this building was new for, you know, 10, 15 years, but now it's hitting 30, and suddenly, this needs a lot of work. The community center had a major overhaul, but now five-plus years, it's starting to just need more attention. It's great that we're redoing, you know, the firehouse, but ultimately, you know, 10 years down the road, we want to make sure we're working on all our facilities together, including even the parking garages and parking lots. So we're trying to bring all of that into one umbrella, one for efficiency and two to preserve our infrastructure. But really, just to manage it, we're going to, we're going to need staff to do so, because right now, we're trying to do it through various entities and various departments, and that's not as effective as it could be.
Thank you. And if anyone saw tatlock light, tatlock field bathrooms, we definitely need someone down there. So, Councilwoman Miniger, I just wanted to say to you that we had a conversation, and I know you had shared your concerns about hiring, and I totally respect that. The one thing I would say is amiss, I guess, on, in terms of our communication, that I didn't hear that you wanted to reduce in terms of, you know, offsetting the cost of hiring. What I will say is, in our goals, is on page three, under key actions, it says, "Create and present the 2024 city budget with a municipal tax rate change at or near 2%." So there were no alarm bells going off in my head when we didn't end up having those conversations. But, you know, I'm always willing to have a conversation to reduce. I don't want to pay more taxes. I do know inflation has been very difficult. I have to tell you, I walk around personally in City Hall three times a week. I know Delia and many others are there. City Hall, some of the furniture is falling apart, and we are, our employees work incredibly long hours, and not all the facilities are up to, you know, working, you know, up to what it should look like. So I just wanted to say that, that if there's ever a time that you feel that you're not being heard, I think it's really important to come and talk to me. And when we spoke after the BOSE meeting, I just thought we were in a good place. So I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I wrote, sorry.
No.
Somebody squeak?
No, go ahead.
I mean, yeah, it's the, basically, I made sure that as soon as I heard something, that something was changing, I emailed the appropriate people. I never got responses from that. Basically, I said, hey, decisions are being made outside of this committee. You need to involve your chair. I, I got a, I got a letter back after, after that. So it basically was, that is, that's the problem with, that's the problem with not being in the loop as a chair, is that you don't get to help structure this budget. And I can tell you, last year I was. And I don't want to, I don't want to say that it was because of who I am or what party I was in, but when others around me are getting that information and the chair's not, that's a problem. That's a problem.
Sorry. Councilman Miniger, what specifically, what emails are you talking about, and what else were you not in the loop about, other than the, can you give specific examples? I just don't know, I have no idea what you're mentioning. The two cops, and then the facility?
Sorry, is there?
I just want to know specifics, because it sounds like, and I apologize if there was something. If you give me specific examples, I can, maybe, if I was involved, then I can, would like to address them.
I can read the emails. Is that fun, is that a fun time for everybody here?
Like, what committee, what, like, what committee and what position, what was not included or?
I emailed the entire, everyone on every committee, and I said, hey, send me everything that you have that involves a request to City Administrator Rogers or Council President Lisa Allen, that is a direct request to change this budget, because I know that that's been happening, and I would like that to be part of the Finance Committee, because without that, the chair is not involved. That's, that was the essence of my email. I'll save you three minutes of reading it.
Yeah. I just want to say this. We sat in meetings, week after week, and I thought we had, I thought the meetings were really great. We had a lot of dialogue. There was nothing, no indication that there was, you know, that you were unhappy with that in our meeting. So I just, I want to move on beyond this and just know that that certainly wasn't the intent. So, does anybody else want, because I want to be able to get to the public, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Madam President. I'll start with some points on the budget, and I'll continue on to share my opinion. So, first, tax levies for schools and the county are both growing this year, 2.9% and 1.4% respectively. Second, considering the growth in the value of the property in Summit by nearly $82 million, the decrease in debt obligation year over year, and the relatively slow growth of expenses like healthcare costs, this year had the potential to maintain services without an increase, or this significant an increase, in the city portion of the taxes. Third, despite this positive trending and despite beginning in such a strong position, council is proposing near-the-maximum increase in taxes that is being done to pay for an increase in operational spending, an increase in capital spending, and to maintain reserves. Now for my opinion, and let me be perfectly clear, I am supportive of increasing the size of the police force. When the chief of police asks for resources, I trust that he needs them, and those requests should be granted. But in doing so, council needed to say no to other things, and make the word of the night, trade-offs. Council needed to say no to adding the other full-time positions. Council needed to find other areas of the budget to decrease operational spending to offset those additions. I don't see where that was done. Next, I understand that there are certain capital projects that can no longer wait, that are absolute necessities. But not all of the projects in this capital budget meet that high standard. Spending thousands of dollars to replace a wall on private property, spending thousands of dollars to decrease the number of parking spaces in the K-lot behind CVS are prime examples of that. In a year like this, council need not maintain such high reserves in both the general fund and the reserve for uncollected taxes, when we have one of the best tax collection rates around. Finally, at $19,000 for the average household, this was not the year to raise our municipal portion of the taxes this much. At this time, this budget is simply unaffordable, and I can't support it.
I'm sorry, people are laughing out loud, is this?
Yeah. So, I don't, I also just, there was a couple comments that I'm trying to keep track of here, so I look like a crazy person. But I just want to say I agree with Councilman Boyer, and that I hope our words and our actions match on affordable housing. And I want to know, I hope that I can be a partner, I want you to know, I hope I can be a partner in that. I want to say, I don't know what the City Hall furniture, there's no City Hall furniture in the, in the capital budget, right? This year?
No.
So I don't know what the point was about the furniture at the, at City Hall. I'll continue on with a couple of things. The inflation stuff, so the increase in spending in this budget way outpaces inflation or growth in CPI. CPI is not relevant. Inflation's not really relevant, because the city's part of cooperative purchasing, purchasing agreements for commodities and other materials that make our pricing better. It's not those things that are driving the cost in the budget. So I think I'll leave it, I think I'll leave it there right now. You know, maybe I'll talk about ignoring parks and playgrounds for years for a minute. This budget only has an additional $250,000 for playgrounds as well, which I think, you know, is a reflection of priorities as well. But, you know, when, when things are, I think it's just odd that we have to defend not spending more money in previous years, right? And I didn't, you know, I think, anyway, I'll leave that there for now. I think zoning, engineering have so much going on because of the tremendous investment that's being done in our community, and I think that's certainly something to be celebrated. I'm going to definitely have more to say in a minute, but I do, I do think we should get to the community also.
Okay. I want to get to the community. We, write yours, write it down, because it's getting late. Write it down. Okay. Well, I actually didn't get to everyone. Did you want to say anything, Councilman?
I just want, there's something that Councilman Vartan brought up about fund balance and reserve for uncollected taxes. Summit historically has built, there's a relationship between those two line items. Fund balance on the revenue side, revenue for uncollected taxes on the appropriation side. Yes, Summit has a fantastic collection rate. You guys pay your taxes. It's fabulous. I mean, really, it's a solid town, and Summit is certainly at the top of collection, the tax collection rate. So the question is, why do we do, why do we have such a large amount there? The municipal budget has been built for many decades around this replenishment. The reserve on collected taxes, this year, $5 million. Look at last year, we didn't collect $300,000, so why are we budgeting $5 million? The fact is that that replenishes your fund balance. That is used in the subsequent year as a revenue source to reduce what you're paying for in your, in this municipal budget. It's essential. It is, it has a symbiotic relationship. That's what, how it's been built. To disrupt that, puts you in, it's, it's, it will structurally imbalance your budget. It happened about nine years ago, where some more fund balance was used, about $1.3 million. And the subsequent year, it's right around when I came, it changed the balance. We had to come up with, that, those costs are built in. You need to find how, if you're going to reduce that fund balance use, which is what the intention was, you have to then change your reserve for uncollected taxes. And it was reduced by a million dollars in 2016. So these things feed each other. You don't have a lot of excess in terms of operational revenues, also just unexpendited balances from prior budget years. To build up the surplus we have this year, yes, it's $11.6 million, but you're using $8.2 million this year. So you have about $3.4, that's in, that's unrestricted. I'd like to see it larger. It's not sitting there being squirreled away, like I've heard. I just think that it's one of these things where we need to be prudent. I think every organization would like to have, and personally, I think everybody would like to have excess monies that are there for budget years that you, sometimes you need more. I'd like to reduce that fund balance in our, in our budget as a revenue source. Love to reduce the reserve for uncollected taxes, but there is a delicate balance there. And I think for us, we try to do our best. We try to use non-tax revenues to balance our budget. Yes, inflation has slowed down. There are still areas in liability insurance and other areas that are still growing at double-digit increases, and those are your larger increases. Sowering wage, we are, we are below where a CPI number is. We've been for many years. I think we just need to understand that, and I just wanted to address it, and I'm not calling you out, Councilman Vartan, about it, I just want to educate the public about it. It's, it's important that it's not looked upon where use more fund balance, reduce that appropriation, and give us a flat tax rate. Because next year, you're going to be hurt and even greater. And that's what I don't want to see happen in Summit. So let's just try to keep that in mind.
Can I just, do we just have a quick discussion about that?
Hold on, wait, one second. No, no, wait, because Councilwoman Hamlet wanted to speak, and I said no. So I'm going to go, I'm going to let her speak briefly, and then I will come back to you, because I do want to go to the public.
Well, regarding, thank you, Council President. Regarding Ashwood Court, Councilman Vartan, would you suggest that we go against our attorney's advice and complete the settlement agreement? Or would you suggest further that we get into another lawsuit with Ashwood Court residents? What would be your suggestion to the $60,000 or so dollars that we're spending on Ashwood Court?
Can I respond to both of those things?
Yes.
So, so first off, I've made it clear from my comments that I'm not supportive of doing that. I'm not supportive of that capital project or expending any more money on it. So that's number one.
Sorry, would you, are you okay with, are you okay with?
Please don't interrupt me. Please, thank you. Second is, so what changed between last year and this year is the schools and county levies are both going up, which council already knew when this budget was finalized, right? We already knew that. The general reserve fund also grew and is significantly larger than in previous years. The main difference is operating costs this year didn't grow outside of control of council. It's not like last year, when healthcare costs went up more than 20%, right? And debt service went up by more than a million last year. Operating costs grew this year because of decisions made by council. We're adding these costs voluntarily. So, yeah, we need to consider the fact that operational costs are increasing, and the amount that we reserve should be more for that reason, right? But it's a chicken and the egg thing, right? Because we wouldn't need to keep growing the reserve if we, if we didn't keep growing the operating costs. So it's, it's, I just want to make that point. I don't think I'm disagreeing with you, and I don't think you were totally disagreeing with me. I'm just saying, I think it's important for the context of the conversation.
Do you want to respond, Administrator Rogers?
Well, I think in terms of salary and wage increases, there's obligations we have. We have contractual obligations that are growing, right? In terms of other expenses in our municipal operation budgets, about 96% can be directly tied to about nine areas of the budget, nine line items, okay? Insurance, fleet maintenance, disposal charge, recycling, fire engine lease, fire hydrants, law litigation, and technology subscriptions, and board of health. That makes up 96% of the million, a little over a million dollars in other expense increases. So it's not as if there's just lavish spending throughout our budget and, you know, all the decisions we're making. These are providing the same essential services we provided year after year, and this is what happened this year. And we have to also remember that for the last five years or so, we have had the benefit of using a lot of reserve monies that we've had, just monies, whether it was the sale of municipal assets. We had $2.29 million in art funds that helped, you know, offset a lot of revenue loss, but millions of dollars that we have that we no longer have, we no longer have those reserves. So even though the size of appropriation increases are not what they were last year, that was, those were three line items that were $2.4 million in increases. These are smaller, but these changes happen, and there's legitimate reasons that we have to provide for in these increases. So they're not really discretionary. I mean, we can make decisions not to pay insurance, or to fix our maintenance, or to pay for the litigation that we're paying, or for recycling collection, and, I mean, so you know this, you've been on finance for a long time, you know these decisions and this budget, and we're not providing a budget that doesn't provide what the citizens of this city demand and expect, and the demands don't decrease, they just don't. The unfunded mandates don't decrease. So we try to provide the best budget, we go through this for months and months and months, there's a lot of discussions. There's no area where you're looking at a blind item going, why does that, why is that, you know, $50,000? There is a valid explanation for all this, and the revenues are just not there anymore to support these appropriation increases like they were in previous budget years.
So can you just, for the benefit of the public, speak to the, some of the unfunded mandates that you're talking about?
Can we, I mean, now we're going back and forth, like, question and answer.
I actually, I actually have a list of those from, I have a small list, unless you would like to speak about that, Administrator Rogers. This is an important point for when you're talking about employees and the amount of work. So you recognize, Councilman Vartan, that we have a tremendous amount of investment and growth in this town. And it's like having a family of four and still driving a two-seater, right? You can't have growth without having people to actually support them. And when we talk about burnout, and we talk about work-life balance, we all want that. I would hope that we would earnestly say to our city employees, who some of them live here and have as much pride in our town as we do, that we would actually say that our growth should be, some of our hiring should be commensurate with that growth. Going back to Schrager as an example, one person is doing two jobs and get paid, he's getting paid one and a half jobs. And so unfunded mandates is when you have a legislative, a legislation that gets layered on top of the work, Pat, well, maybe you can even talk about that better than I can.
State mandate, no state pay.
Right, right.
They impose certain regulations that we have to abide by without funding them, so it's up to the city to pay for that, to expedite and implement those changes.
And even the recent COA with all the fees that are going to come down from the new affordable housing law, it touches tax, it touches finance, it touches Matt Delory's group in which, under Director Schrager, in which he is a full-time person who works half-time for municipal, to work on our affordable housing, and now that's actually going to grow into a full-time position over the next six months. And so I would say, what is the cost of burnout? Direct, I'm sorry, Administrator Rogers?
Well, I mean, that goes to the point where there might not be, where, okay, this was, I mean, there's a couple areas, and it's not to say they're not worthy of doing. Recycling is an unfunded mandate, we're required to do it. There's a big cost to it, though. The access to public records in Oprah is law. We have to provide everything and do everything possible, there is a big cost to that. There are just a number within each department, there are things that we do and handle that are unfunded laws. This is where this, I think, a lot of people, they want to do the good, do the good work at the state level, and it all gets just dumped on municipalities, and the responsibilities and demands continue to grow every year. And here's the thing, we have not really hired personnel to address this. So there is burnout issues here with our personnel, and so we're finally trying to address some of this, and we haven't. There were plenty of other employment and staffing requests in other budgets that we did not fund or pursue. So there were trade-offs, there were things that we decided to take on this year and not take on. Every budget is a series of trade-offs. So I just want to point out that there's a small number of areas in our municipal operations that are going up, there are different type of increases, they're real, they're there, they're not excessive, and they're not just wants, they're needs.
And just to say, if you look at page 10 on the presentation, the financial summary totals, the general fund increase last year, wait, I just misplaced it, sorry, was 4.9%. This year it was 3.8%. So the bigger jump was in our capital budget, which we're going to get to. But you can't say that there's no inflation with the city, because from 2003 to 2004, salaries automatically have step increases, they have COLA, they have, you know, they automatically go up, so there's.
I don't think representing contractual obligations as inflation is really fair, though. That's not, I don't, I don't think that's, you know, I mean, that's, contractual obligation is a different thing than.
And we have contractual obligation.
Yeah, well, of course, of course we do. But I want city staff to have what they need. I'm not suggesting we don't want to arm city staff with the resources that they need. I think it would also be great if City Hall staff could afford to live in Summit. That's what we're talking about here, we're talking about affordability, right? And, I mean, access to public records, we can pass along some of those costs to the people, if there's lawyer fees involved, we can pass along some of those costs. But I mean, there's an Oprah, there's an Oprah law being discussed in Trenton now. I mean, Council President, you work for Assemblywoman Nancy Munoz. Are we getting, can we get some help with these unfunded mandates, right? And, you know, I mean.
Not until we're in the majority.
Okay, I mean.
Well, if anybody watches the New Jersey budget, we're going to move on.
I mean, I mean, look, you know.
I'm going to move on. Because we need to go to.
Real quick, two quick things.
You know, I'd like, honestly, I'd like, like, two seconds, sorry. I mean, I've been, we do need, like, a little decorum up here, I mean, this back and forth is just killing me. You know, I just want to put something to bed, right? Because, you know, I'm really excited about the next budget. Coming into office in four months, this budget process actually started last year in August 2023, right? The department, the departmental heads, they submit the budget in October. From November to mid-December, there's discussions in the various committees about the budgets. There's a workshop in December about the budget. And then we come into office in January, and we, the binder's already really there, it's already put together almost, right? I mean, listen, every, the departments have, they have everything that, they're submitting you something already. They've taken several months to put stuff together and say, hey, this is our proposal for the budget. My thing is, it's, after we pass this, this council, the people that were just elected, this is a year for us to actually start fresh, work with the departments at the beginning and say, what are your ideas? Here's our ideas, here's what we would like to have happen for next year. This, you know, I'm sitting here, and I'm thinking, like, you were a part of the whole, you were a part of the whole budget process in 2023, you just came in here, and it's like, oh, well, look what you, look what y'all did, y'all raised taxes, look at all this stuff. I mean, you knew about this last year. I mean, this next budget, to be honest, I mean, is, is the budget where we all sit down and we chart out a really strong, you know, conservative budget for next year. This stuff has already been here for a year already.
Yeah, that's crazy baloney. No, that's, no, I have to respond to that.
Wait, Councilman Vinegar, Vartan, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Both of us together are vinegar, vinegar, did you hear that?
It's getting late, and we really have to get to.
Yeah, I know, but we got to talk about that. I mean, we have to talk about that.
You can, I, no, 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 I, no, no. We are going to go, we are going to have plenty of dialogue and opportunity, we are going to the public, I am shutting this down. Write it down, please write it down.
I got it.
And we're going to go to the public. Who would like to come, I would like to open it up to the public. Who would like to come up first?
Peter LeJoy, 124 Kennewbrook Parkway, Summit, New Jersey. It's become very apparent to me that now we are entering the silly season of politics, where we have two council people that are taking a very simple and adequate budget and turn, trying to turn it into folly. I think the folks at home should pay attention to the fact that the card that was sent out was totally false and fallacious. And if you look at your very own budget from 2023, Kevin already stated it, you put through a 1.1% estimated increase in total tax bill on the average homeowner. This budget is putting a 0.9% increase. Stop playing politics with a good town, okay? This, this is, people want to live in this city, we support this city, there are hundreds of kids playing sports. Okay, you want to cut something significantly? Close the municipal pool, close the muni. This is nonsense, okay? We have a parking garage that needs capital work. Okay, let me, let me ask you something. You want to talk about bringing on expenses, what has Union County, controlled by the Democrats, given to Summit? You were so interested in getting into the circle of care. Well, if Union County was doing what Bergen County was doing, which was managing it at the county level, we wouldn't have this issue. But, no, let's bring it home to Summit, let's increase the responsibilities in areas where the city has no responsibility. So I, quite frankly, I've looked at this budget, I've looked at every line, and quite frankly, there is not substantial change. We need those police. I have watched for 40 years improvements done and not managed, and I think Mr. Rogers is absolutely correct to have a facilities manager, and I'm just tired of what is an early politicization of this budget. And Mr. Miniger, you know what? When these two ladies were in the minority, they didn't hear anything until the night before. So I don't really, you know, you can cry all you want, but I don't want to hear the politics anymore. I'm tired of it, this is a good budget, pass it.
Name and address, please.
Good evening, Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. I'm just baffled by what's the, what's going on here. You know, we talk about, we want Summit to be the best, we want Summit to be the GOAT. It's very, I'm not a numbers guy at all. Very simple things. You walk around downtown, there's electrical outlets that are broken that belong to the city, huge liability. The towns, you know, we complain about garbage. Who, you ever, who goes out in the morning and visits their garbage man at 6:30 in the morning? Those guys worked their butts off. Do we even talk about them? Stress? That's the thing we have to think about. It's the quality of life issues that bother me. There used to be a guy that would wake up six, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock in the morning, he would blow downtown with a leaf blower until somebody complained it was too loud. That, he was take, you talked to the guy downtown, he loved his job. Did we replace him? No, somewhere along the line, somebody decided it was too expensive to have a guy clean downtown who's probably making 10, 12 bucks an hour. Our landscapers make more than that. I don't have a landscaper, I cut my own grass. But my point is, people move to Summit for the quality of life, safety, education, proximity to New York, in a roundabout way, overlook hospital, it's not a Summit entity, I mean, it's not a Summit, we don't pay for that through our taxes, but it's here, it's here because Summit's Summit. It was here for a reason. All that stuff is what we, we all pay for, that's why we live here. So if it costs, look, I'm not a fixed income, I'm retired from the fire department, I'm not a gazillionaire, but I'm willing to pay extra for extra police, which we're not arguing about. But what about that guy that used to clean downtown Summit? What about the guy that used to take care of the City Hall? Water the plants? Those are all jobs that we got rid of that aren't here anymore. And that's the quote, someone said it to me a couple of weeks ago, they moved to Summit because things are taken care of. They don't have to worry about their garbage being picked up, they don't have to worry about the police department because it's a quality police department, they don't worry about the fire department because it's a quality fire department. When I was on a negotiation committee for the fire department, many moons ago, an old city administrator said to me, when we tried to cut starting salaries, he said, no, we want quality people, and we have to pay them. And yet, maybe that affects our taxes, but at the end of the day, that's why you're here, you want quality services. So this arguing back and forth about, I didn't get information, and, you guys were on the friggin' budget committee. If you're the chairman, step up and say, hey, what's going on? Right? Put your foot down. Look, I'm the chairman, I want to know what the heck's going on. Otherwise, bow out. So you want to run it? And then you have no responsibility. But step up, be a councilperson, be the chairman, do your job. We voted you in for a reason. Look, I'm not, I'm not the smartest guy in the shed, the sharpest tool in the shed, but you got to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you for your vote.
I know it's a passionate night, I just want to make sure we all treat each other with respect. Thank you.
Trying not to be passionate.
No, I know.
Good evening, I'm Claire Toth, 11 Sunset Drive, and unlike many people, I really like budgets. I have a law degree, Masters of Law and Tax, I worked for the U.S. Treasury Department, I spent years as a financial planner, I've been the treasurer of the Summit Educational Foundation.
Could she have a couple seconds back, because there's a loud conversation in the back? Mr. LeJoy is talking loud enough for us to hear him up here.
Okay, I'll keep going, I was the treasurer of the Summit Educational Foundation and Summit Downtown, and in all of those roles. I created budgets, I reviewed budgets, and I implemented budgets. So overseeing and passing the city's budget is the most important responsibility common council undertakes each year. As you've noted, the budget is a statement of what council leadership values and prioritizes, and what it envisions for our city. In overseeing the budget, council leadership must look at the big picture, make the difficult decisions, and coordinate the wants of the various city departments with what's in the residents' best interest to create a coherent, affordable whole. And I believe this council unfortunately has not done that important job this year. It's expensive to live in Summit. It's expensive to own or to rent a house, to buy groceries, to support a family, and ultimately to retire in Summit. And I've heard complaints from my neighbors about the tax increase that's headed our way. It's the largest increase in a decade, and so I want to share my primary takeaway from this proposed budget. When comparing last year's preliminary capital budget requests with the 2024 proposed budget, it appears departments mostly got what they requested. And that sounds positive, but it comes with a downside for Summit's residents, because a major danger with a budget this size and with an organization as complex as City Hall is that decisions get made in silos without looking at the budget as a big picture. And that, I think, it looks like that is what has happened here. Aligning the budget with the big picture is council leadership's job. The proposed budget reads as if that leadership has not been exercised, because leadership does come with hard choices. And with this budget, it reads like instead of making those choices, just about everything from the wish list got granted. Council ought to deliver a budget that treats our taxpayers with respect. In a year with significant increase in the value of property within the city, as we've noted, and that increases revenue on its own, there's an opportunity to deliver taxpayers some relief. And council should go back to the drawing board because our neighbors deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Carol Pak Tang, 234 Summit Avenue. So I'm here to come.
So I'm here to comment on the budget. I have three young daughters and I really plan to live here a long time. I'm very concerned about some of the line items in this budget. And as was brought up multiple times, you know, it is getting more expensive to live, period, in this country, and especially in this town. You know, like, looking at this, my question is, is it really the best time to have these increases in this year? That is, that is historically known to be a harder year on people's wallets. And that is a main concern of so many people all around the state, and especially in a town like Summit where it's so expensive to come here to live. As President Allen, Allen noted multiple times about the inflation. You know, we are, we are all feeling it, no matter where we sit on the socioeconomic ladder here in Summit. Secondly, if you are going to be doing the spend, the increase in spending, you know, we have to look at where it's occurring. The word trade-off was made multiple times tonight. And where is the trade-off? One of the trade-offs that I noticed as a family with, as a, you know, family with young kids and fri, and their friends and they wanna go play, the, one of the trade-offs I'm clearly noticing is that the proposed preliminary budget in December had a budget for Tatlock Playground of, proposed of $500,000. This budget now that was put forth in April is only $250,000. So one of the trade-offs that you guys decided to make was in the infrastructure of something that is going to pull in young families to this town. So, you know, I really urge you to hold off on voting and to amend the budget and look at one of these critical items that is very important to so many people in this town and one of the big reasons that increases the quality of living for young families to this town. And something that people definitely looking to move here are looking at, you know, for the opportunity for their kids and the education. Thank you.
Will Von Klempner, 156 Colonial Road. Thank you for all the work on the budget. And I agree, this is a policy statement. It's well said. It involves choices. So I have an inquiry. You all have the facts. How much money is in the proposed budget for the city's safety and health relative to environmental factors? I'm thinking of things like, is there money for monitoring and testing chemicals that landscapers spray on lawns around town? Or chemicals that the city itself uses in its operations? Before the next sandy storm? It'll, it will hit, there'll be another one. Will Summit have done the investment to be ready with solar panels and generators to power the street and the traffic lights? And to keep the important buildings in downtown operating? Would we be ready? You have to do this in advance, as you know. Is there financing for an ongoing changeover of city vehicles and equipment to low pollution models? Clean air is everything. I'm with the middle school students who are here. They can add to this list. Some of you get guidance at home on this subject. These investments in farsighted municipalities, this sort of investment are priorities. And I hope our city is 21st century reality-based, whether we like the reality or not. And I hope we're science-based. You talk about an unfunded mandate? Storms? Changes in climate? There ain't no choice. So I understand how items under this heading might be spread around, be in different departments. So I'm asking you, please, can you, can you name some? Can you somehow group them for us? Even in informal list of the total monies that you've chosen, this is a policy, it's a policy statement in the budget, for the next year, for Summit's safety and health relative to environmental factors? I'm here to listen.
We're gonna keep going. We'll, we'll answer the questions after.
I will look forward to that. No formal structure required, because as I say, this is something usually spread around a budget. I would like to know what we're doing, because this is kind of a no-choice item. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you wanna give the clerk your statement?
I will clean it up and give.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Rick Whipple from 30 Garden Road. Thank you, Administrator Rogers. I thought some of your explanations there about the unfunded, the tax, the uncollected tax reserves and the unfunded, unrestricted cash were very helpful. And I thought that back and forth was very informative to me. I did think, you know, at work, we have a lot of programs that I help manage. And the contingency is always the wild card that people get to, you know, play games with. It's not transparent. People just do things. There's not line items in the budget. And I think that one of the things that happened in the budget this year was that the, again, the unrestricted cash increased. I think it was 20% last year and it went up to 30%. So that, to me, is increasing the contingency that you can use for, you know, the unfunded mandates and things like that. But also kind of leaves, kind of takes some transparency out because it's money that's not line item to things in the budget that kind of concerns me in general process-wise and transparency-wise. So I guess my, my questions are, are there any specific risks that we have in mind that we would need this additional unrestricted cash for? Or are there any potential usages that have been talked about beyond risks? And then the second question is, how does the dollar values compare to, say, what we had in 2020 and that we needed to use at all during COVID, which was, I think, a pretty big unfunded expectation? And how we had to deal with that? So I like, everybody's talking about how the budget reflects our values, but then, as a community, but then the unfunded, these unspecified funds don't really reflect the values. They're just kind of this wild card part that, that leaves us a little bit concerned. So those are my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll hold on one second. Administrator Rogers, I'm wondering if maybe we should answer some of these questions as we go, to your point, because I don't wanna.
The first question I was asked by the gentleman about safety and health relative to the environment, that, that might take a little more work and analysis. So I, I will not be able to provide an answer on that tonight. The unrestricted cash is, is, we cannot spend that without approval from the council for some emergency purpose. That would be the only time we would have, we would tap into that. It's, it's there. It will sit in our fund balance. If there is a situation where there's emergency cash because we have spent all of what has been authorized in this budget at the end of the year and we need additional cash to cover some expense, then that, there's an emergency appropriation that's done. It would come from that unrestricted cash. There is no plan to spend it. It is purely just sitting in the fund balances cash, and that's what it will remain.
Is it gaining interest?
Yes.
Okay.
4%.
And if we, if we borrow it, we'd have to put it, we'd have to replenish it at some point.
Yeah, I mean, what happens is, in that instance, if you were spending from that and it was an emergency appropriation, it becomes a deferred charge in your subsequent budget. So you would actually have to pay yourself back that money.
Right. And if you have a bad year and you have a revenue.
Right, I mean, and, and COVID, during the pandemic, the real, it wasn't a question in our municipal budget. It was parking services utility that saw a dramatic decrease in revenue. And that's when we had to take out an $885,000 note. That was a special emergency. Many municipalities with parking utilities or authorities were faced with the same situation. We weren't collecting revenue that year for four months or so. And millions of dollars lost, so that was essential. And we had to do that, and, and we're still paying that back. We had five years pay that back, yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Andrew McCurdy, Parkview Terrace. My comment is, is about issues with lack of transparency and lack of explanation for the increase in the size of city government proposed by this budget. I'll take for example the police force, the proposal to expand the police force by two full-time officers, which is a significant personnel decision for a force of this size. Summit is a desirable place to be officer. So, you know, we can expect these officers to retire here 25 years later. So the first question is, is, you know, what's the estimated cost of that over the tenure of the police officer? Based on the numbers that have been thrown around today, it sounds like it's in the millions. As someone who's worked in law enforcement for, for almost a decade, I understand the importance of police. Maybe we need to expand the force, maybe we don't. My issue is, I don't have enough information to come to a conclusion on that. There has never been a discussion of a robust analysis publicly about what these officers will do or the need for them and comparing it to alternatives. Not, there wasn't a single statement about it at the city council meeting proposing the budget. In the entire 400-some-page budget, there is not one sentence explaining why we need to increase the police force. Apparently, there's a letter from the chief. I don't know why that's not made public. That would be helpful for the public out here trying to evaluate our city's budget. So that lack of transparency is disappointing and frustrating. So if I'm trying to read between the lines, I would have actually said the, the reason for the increase is because calls for service increased a lot last year. So I, and reading through that, it's actually not 911 calls that went up or emergency calls. It's public service calls. I didn't know what that was. I Googled it. Those are routine, non-emergency, low-priority calls. So I, my question on that is, is that the reason why we need to expand the force? And how is it that those number of calls went up by 6,000 last year? Or is it just that we're keeping statistics that we didn't keep before? But what I heard tonight is, it sounds like the justification for increasing the force is to combat burglaries, auto thefts, and actually fight crime. So my question there is, is what would these officers or additional officers be doing specifically in that regard? I don't know that that was answered. And also, why, why isn't overtime a more viable and flexible and efficient alternative? Based on the numbers that were thrown around, if they, police went over overtime budget by 156,000 last year and it costs 87,000 for two officers, it's still cheaper to do overtime. And it preserves the flexibility for the future rather than committing ourselves to, you know, pay full-time physicians for the next 25 years. So my comment overall is about process, transparency. And I just hope in the future that the city will be a little more forthcoming with the justifications. Thank you.
Chief, did you wanna talk about the hiring? Or I know, Tammy, you have the cost. Do you wanna talk about any of the costs related to hiring?
So in this budget, we have two police officers. I think we've talked about this quite a few times tonight. Usually, they're coming over at a step two from another department. So they're coming over at a salary of about $57,000. The employer is not paying a portion of their pension for two years. So I did an internal document, what I would consider a work paper, that costed it out over 10 years. And it does grow because they grow in steps. But in the first two years, the employer's not paying a share of their pension. They're paying it. There's healthcare costs typically, I, I mean, it just depends on who you get. Some come in with families, some come in single. It's, I can't really predict that, but I took in an average. So it grows over time, as with any police officer that we hire.
Okay. Chief, one thing, I've talked to several police officers. In terms of overtime, I can understand that balance between hiring and the longer-term expense of having actual police officers paid versus.
Not me.
Is there anyone that would like to turn that off? And so versus, it seems cheaper to have them on, you know, as overtime. But my experience in talking to the police officers is, they, at some point, they're like, I can't work 80 hours a week. You know, there's, you can only do so much overtime. So that was just kind of my antidote for you, Andrew. But Chief, do you wanna talk about overtime and that cost and the balance that we're gonna strike hiring two police officers?
Well, like you were saying, in the short term, that the overtime does take care of the business that we need to take care of. But overtime, it takes its toll on the officer. There are times, when you, when you're constantly using overtime, that you have the overtime funds, but you don't have the officer, you know, healthy officer to, to, you know, work the shift that you wanna, you wanna cover. I'm trying, what else were you asking on? You said the burnout.
Yeah, I've just heard, I mean, I've spoken with some of the police officers and they were saying that the overtime is really high. And they're like, you know what? We don't mind doing overtime for short periods of time. But when it becomes part of a lifestyle of overtime, you just burn out your.
Well, yeah, and a lot comes with that. Not just like, it's unhealthy for the officer. It becomes dangerous. They're less productive. Again, no, initially, it's, it's a good way to take care of a problem. Last year, you know, I think Councilman Boyer went over the success we had by deploying the extra officers using the overtime. It's just not sustainable over a long period of time. After time, they get run down and, you know, they're not producing the results that they would produce if they, you know.
Councilman Boyer, do you wanna?
Can I just ask Administrator Rogers a question? I know this may give you nightmares sometimes, right? With overtime? Because you want, you want, you want fixed costs, like costs you know, at the end of the day, you're gonna have money for. And sometimes overtime costs run over, right? And, I mean, at some point, you wanna get to a sustainable police force where you may not have 400, $380,000 of overtime that, you know, you, you have to find somewhere. I mean, you wanna talk about some of those challenges?
I certainly wanna live with what we budget for, for any line item in any department. When you see those numbers grow even $50,000, and last year it was greater than 100,000 plus, it has to come from somewhere within your budget. And that's why you need a little bit, you know, you start to pull from other areas that you may have projected a certain amount and it didn't turn out. So that's where you start seeing transfers at the end of the year. We were fortunate to have those monies. But if you don't, that's when you start to go into your unrestricted funds. Because you're, you're having, you, there's a need for emergency authorization, for appropriation. So I don't like to see that. And when you start to see that, you have to seriously question what is going on in that department. And I think over, just last year was a particularly difficult year for the police department and all the issues they were facing in the community, which I won't rehash. But it does happen. It's happened in the fire department. It's happened in other areas and, and roads. When we're doing, you know, we have heavy winters, snowstorms. I mean, those happen, but you have to, you have to plan for that. You don't like to see it happen in any great, great amounts. But for the police department, I think there is, I certainly support what the chief was requesting, how we've analyzed this. There were, there was a greater number requesting, so we only, we were able to manage for two additional hires. So there, yeah, I get the, the, the flexibility with using overtime to support your staff, but it isn't sustainable. It, you think that people are, oh, they just wanna earn more money, and that's not the case. They have families, they have a personal life. They don't wanna be working all the time. They love the community, they love working here, but they also need a personal life. And it certainly, it certainly impacts their family negatively. We need additional staffing for that reason.
And last thing, through you, Council President. Chief Zagorski, where people don't sometimes think about is the pedestrian safety issues, the traffic violations, the speeding. We've been in safety committee meetings and maybe half of our list are residents calling and asking for Lieutenant Daly and yourself to conduct, you know, speeding violations on certain streets. And how many patrolmen do you have in your, in your, in your traffic bureau? Right? Are you, are you down in your traffic bureau? Would that help you in terms of pedestrian safety?
Yes, and that was part of the, the proposal that I wrote in the letter. We were facing two problems that, that resulted in increased workload. It was the increase in the property crimes. And it was the, you know, the significant increase in the aggressive, the aggressive driving that you see in town, the traffic violations, the pedestrian violations. I don't have any stats in front of me to show how much they went up. But anybody that has been up in the center of our town for more than 10 minutes, I mean, they can see what's going on there as far as the, of the traffic issues. So that is part of it. We would, you know, we, we would talk about the crime issue, but that is a significant part of it, is the, the public's concerns over the, the. of it, is the public's concerns over the traffic and safety issues. And if I could just add, you know, with the overtime, most of the overtime normally is used to, to fund minimum shift levels, when officers are off, or unfortunately, when they walked out injured, work-related injuries. This overtime, the $146,000 in overtime, that was needed to go, because, you know, even at optimal strength levels, we couldn't handle the workload that was being thrown at us. You know, so it wasn't a matter of just getting the minimum out there, to have a safe, you know, patrol force. This was, you know, something that we felt we had to do, to address the problems that we were having, and the concerns of the city. So that overtime was used to put out additional officers. So, you know, with the two, with the two officers that you're proposing, that will enable us, give us more flexibility to increase our minimum manpower on specific shifts, specifically where, you know, we were having the problems on the overnight. It also allows us to address a lot of those traffic issues that we were talking about as well.
I might be wrong. Did we have to transfer money when there were a lot of break-ins happening towards the end of last year? There was a lot of patrols happening. Did we have to transfer funds as an emergency, because we had so much overtime?
We took them from, unfortunately, from other places, yes.
Okay.
I didn't take them, you took them.
You took it from the fire department, so are chief lovers.
I know, poor chief lovers.
It was the DCS, it was the DCS Roads unit, right, primarily? But, but, I mean, but to the, to the question, though, Andrew McCurdy's question, right, it sounded like there's an issue overnight, but then there's also an issue during the day. So are the officers being added to the overnight shift, or are they being added to the...
In my initial proposal, I had asked for four officers, and the plan was, with four officers, to add to the regular shift, to add one into traffic, and to one into the community policing bureau. But after evaluating, you know, with the two officers, we came up with a plan where we want to address the concerns of the public. What happens a lot of times, we have, say, we have four sectors in our town that we have officers patrolling. Those officers, you know, they're presented with, you know, many responsibilities. We try to have them do some of these proactive measures, you know, with the residential patrols, to deal with the, with the property crimes, to address areas where there's the traffic problem. The issue is that they often get pulled away from that to take service calls. What we found when we were using the overtime and the precision patrols was, we would put these overtime patrols out there exclusively to take care of a specific problems. They weren't taking radio calls. The area cars were addressing, you know, the calls for service. They were specifically, you know, targeting areas of problem. So what we talked about with these two new officers were, that they will work, you know, hand-in-hand with patrol, but they would be a hybrid type of officer, where they're the fixers. They're the ones that we're going to put, you know, when the public has a problem, we get them overtime. We get the calls, you know, pedestrian complaints, not usually for pedestrians, in certain areas and stuff. So we're going to use these officers just to focus on these problem areas. We were using those precision patrols to patrol specific areas at specific times that we, that our analysis showed that we were having some of these problems with the crime. We're going to use those officers. Basically, we're going to use the officers that you're giving us, the way we use the officers, you know, doing precision patrols with the overtime. That's how we're going to utilize them.
Like, for example, we just got an email today. A resident says, "Hey, people are running stop signs between 6:00 and 8:00, when we get off the train, Jersey Transit. Can you send a patrol car over there to, you know, enforce?" Right? That would be an example of...
Correct. And right now, like, we will use, we will use our area cars to take on those assignments. But as they're on that assignment, they're getting pulled away on a service call. So, you know, but there are downtimes where they could take care of those problems as well. But we want to use the additional officers to exclusively hyper-focus on these problems.
Councilman Miniger, you've been so patient.
Yes. So just, I was just going to provide the number that I did have from CFO Baldwin's spreadsheet. I just added at the bottom lines, it's for 10 years, one police officer, and it's, it does take into consideration, like, starting at step one, like, they're fresh out of police academy. Certain inflators with health insurance, dental insurance, and pension. It's 1,400,000. That's the total of 10, 10 years. And that's everything in, that's everything. Salary, body armor, equipment, stuff like that.
Starting in year two?
No, that's, starting year one, that includes, so I know there's pensions not included until year three, but we have, you know, the first two years' salary there, too.
Okay. All right.
I just have a comment.
Sure.
I'm assuming that that's compounded?
Councilman Miniger?
I would need to defer to...
Because, I mean...
It's all right, they're answering the question about the cost.
Okay. It's not, in 10 years, that officer's getting $1 million?
No, he...
Correct.
Through you, Council President.
I can confirm that.
That's the cost of everything that goes with the pension, the health insurance that the city pays on his behalf. Body armor in the first year, and then uniform allowances throughout the 10 years. So it's definitely not what the officer's making.
Right. That's over a 10-year period of time, everything, you know, employee benefits.
I don't have it on hand, but Councilman Miniger has the top salary there, just in the salary line, in year 10.
Yeah, 111.
Yeah.
Year 10.
So, just to comment on the officers that are working overtime, and it doesn't even include, during the school season, if a crossing guard calls in sick, it's usually replaced by a police officer?
Yes, we get help from the parking enforcement officers as well, but that is a burden that we take on, because it's one of the most important things that we...
Right. So, increasing pedestrian safety. And I believe you mentioned earlier, you know, one of the reasons you had officers in areas patrolling because of car thefts and home break-ins, which were not, those officers were not able to do traffic violations in our downtown. I mean, I was, I spoke with a police officer, and I asked a question, because I was curious. I was on Union Place, and someone made an illegal U-turn, and they were, the police officer was coming down Summit Avenue, and I was curious, why wouldn't they stop him? And the comment back was, "A lot of times, we can't stop a traffic violation because we're on a service call." And so for me, that's a safety issue. And I didn't see your letter, but based on what you said, you'd requested four officers, and I believe you got two.
Correct.
So I believe that...
Well, not yet.
Well, hopefully, you'll get two. So in my mind, that's, that's a trade-off. If you're asking, as the chief of police, for four officers to do your job, and you're only, hopefully, getting, you're only getting two, to me, that's a trade-off.
Okay. Diego.
Good evening. Diego Joakim, NARG Court. Michael Rogers' job includes preparing a budget that reflects the wishes of the council majority. This year's wishes can be summarized thusly. Taxes are increasing, the city squirrels away cash in swelling reserves, and capital and operational spending both grow a lot. This council is making a choice to raise taxes. Reassessments will bring 3.6 million into our coffers this year. This number alone would be the largest tax levy increase in at least 10 years. But this doesn't seem to be enough for this council. Another $1.2 million is being raised by taxing all of us whose properties were not reassessed. In contrast, the latest administration lowered the tax rate in 2020, '21, and '22. Our already large reserves keep growing. The general fund beginning balance of 11.7 million is at an all-time high, but it is not being used to lower taxes or retire debt. Why? Why squirrel away another 1.5 million into a savings account and out of the pockets of the taxpayers? This is yet another choice to raise taxes. In terms of appropriations, the number tells a story of runaway government spending instead of focused investment in public safety. Compared to 2023 actuals, municipal appropriations are up a mind-blowing 8.2%. Half of this hike is due to a 1.4 million increase to community services and general government, which increased 15% and 24%, 24% respectively. 10 new employees are being added to the payroll, five of them pensionable, and expenses the city will bear for decades, and that's the number in the book. In contrast, the 485,000 investment in public safety, while material, seems quite reasonable. Like kids in a candy store, this council plans to double the municipal capital budget this year to 4 million, then more than double it again to 10 million in 2025, and 8 million in 2026. In contrast, capital for sewer improvements is being cut dramatically. Why are we choosing to disinvest in critical infrastructure to pay for an athletic field and a bunch of paving projects? Notably, there seem to be no resources for outdoor dining, clean energy investments, or improvements to the soccer fields, baseball diamond, or flooding at Memorial Field. Finally, the debt to pay for the new firehouse was issued in 2021. Since that moment, our municipal net debt has actually decreased by $7 million. Facts matter. The firehouse is not driving this bloated budget, and it's important for our community to understand that. Your campaign motto was "Together for Summit." Now that you're in office, it seems to have morphed into "Spend, Baby, Spend." Thank you.
Can you just clarify one point, Diego? You said, "We're hiring 10 employees?"
Yeah, between part-time and full-time, yes. And if you give me the time, I can actually give you the page number in the PDF.
Council President, I'm happy to respond.
Oh, yeah, we'll respond to that. Go ahead, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yes. Administrator Rogers, would you like to do the honors, or would you like me to do it? So we can talk about the administration, the fire department, the UCC, DCS, the police department, or the sewer utility. Do you want to take the left hand, and I'll take the right hand?
You can start. I'm not sure where you want to go.
So, in administration, Diego, we changed a temporary part-time communications officer, specialist, to permanent part-time communication specialist. That's been in the works for quite a long time. Fire department chief, would you like to come up and talk about your changes? We had a full-time lieutenant, fire subcode official retired. You can probably do it better.
All right. So, we've acknowledged that there's, since 2023 to 2024, there's an increase of five full-time employees. I'll go over this again. The part-time, we had per diems in our sanitation department, and it's been there for a number of years, but it just was becoming unsustainable to function, operationally, to try to just call somebody in hours before they have to go on a shift, which is just not working anymore. So we just, we, the three per diems, we've converted into part-time. It's just a salary, it had no impact to our budget financially, they don't have any benefits. That was part of the change. That's three positions, part-time positions. There was a change in, and I can give you the slide of, page 33, slide 33 in our budget, I've gone through this. So it's not to say that we've hired 10 employees, it's not, it's not a fair representation. Some we've converted from part-time to full-time, I went over that. We started in the fire department last year, these changes in 2023. We had one lieutenant who was a, was one employee, full-time. We split the salary in the Uniform Construction Code, which is a trust, and we had half of the salary in the fire department. So we counted that person as a .5 FTE, an FTE, and .5 in UCC. And when that person, when that employee retired, we hired a new full-time. That was sort of net from a personnel standpoint. But then we went, in our UCC, we hired a full-time position to replace that, that fire code, fire subcode official. We changed a lead inspector who was hired in 2023. We had a dire need in our code enforcement, so that, that position became a part-time to full-time position. He's still a lead inspector, but also a code inspector. There's a list of this. So the part I'm trying to just articulate here is that we're talking about positions that were per diem, that are now part-time, and then we removed a part-time maintenance, DCP maintenance worker, that's no longer, so it was a series of changes. Yes, the net impact is 10, that's absolutely true. But I just want to just clarify that three, the three of those positions were per diems that are now part-time, but there was no financial impact to that budget.
My concern is with the pension, my concern is both with the growth. It went from, my screen just went out, from 202 to 212. Full-time, 177 to 182. Those are pensionable. That means that, all else equal, they will command, they will mean an increase in our pension obligations long-term. And it goes to some of the things that were said earlier about making choices. Everything you're saying, Michael, makes a lot of sense. But the question is, where was the effort made to decide, "Well, this maybe we'll do it next year, this maybe we'll not do it this year?" I don't see any of that. And frankly, the employee portion of the budget, I spoke about a lot of other things, and I think that I have a lot of concerns. It's not just the number of pensionable employees, but the fact is that we're adding five new pensionable employees to the city ledger, for whatever reason, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Every year...
Diego, I can't have you back and forth.
Yeah, yeah, so I just wanted to...
Sorry, I understand.
That's right.
So as far as personnel goes, every year, we've managed our staffing totals to the best of our ability, whether we've operated, it's fluctuated, part-time, full-time. We have done, what we've had, we have done the best we've could possibly do on our respective departments. And every year, we're being asked to do more and more. And there is definitely a breaking point in our organization. There's morale issues, there are just, the demands continue to grow. So at some point, nobody, nobody wants to ever be in a budget year where you're, you need to increase personnel, just because of this thing that, of course, there's all these other associated costs, insurance, pension, but there is a service-level expectation in this city that we're trying to provide and maintain, just to maintain, and it's getting harder and harder. So as much as technology, we try to utilize technology to reduce any need for personnel, we need bodies. We need people operating in these, in our departments. So it's unfortunate where some of these changes happened last year, it's being reflected in the 2024 number. I clearly explained this during our presentation, before it was introduced, this budget, and what the changes were, so for just transparency reasons, a lot happened, and I needed to take some time. But I do understand the long-term financial impacts. But it is, it is just to continue to provide the level of service that the city, that requires, and also expects, and it requires people to do it.
Thank you.
I'll clean this up and send it to you.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Oh, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Administrator Rogers, can you just count the five? Because there's two parts. Are you kind of, can you just count the five full-time? Two police officers, facilities manager, the firefighter was discussed, but we had to do that because...
Right, there was, so there was a staff assistant position that went from part-time to full-time, and that's in the sewer utility.
But that's not in, that's not counting.
So, for clarification or education purposes, our parking and sewer utilities are outside what we refer to as the municipal budget or general fund budget. So those are funded by user fees, they're not, your taxes are not impacted by those positions. However, we talk, we speak of everyone as a city organization, the utilities are a part of the city organization, so they are reflected in the city personnel.
So, full-time personnel impacted by the taxpayer. How many exactly is that?
Full-time is four of those five.
So four. Four is the number of full-time personnel. So that's two police officers, facilities manager, and then that would be the, the last one is the sewer... The full-time, no, that doesn't count.
Well, it's actually in the UCC, so it's really three, because that part-time went to a full-time, and the UCC is a trust fund, and that's also, that's all user fee as well.
So three impact the taxpayer, not five.
The general fund and taxes, yes.
Right, so three full-time employees impact the taxpayer.
Right. And one of those, and just to clarify, one of...
The taxpayer's paying the sewer utility, though.
Understand, but we've all identified that there's, we're treating that differently. We're talking about...
Right, and one of those, and just to clarify, one of-
The taxpayer's paying the sewer utility though.
Understand, but we've all identified that there's, we're treating that differently. We're talking about what's not covered by the sewer or the parking utility.
And one of the employees is from 2023?
Correct.
Right, okay, okay. Sorry, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Miguel Velez. I'm at 113 Mountain Avenue. I've been there since 1984. First came here from Bell Labs as a department head, but my last 10 years were with the New York Times as the infrastructure manager. Now, that's relevant to what I want to say, just. When I got to the New York Times, all of the departments were feudal systems. Every department made their own budget for their computers, et cetera, and we either approved them or denied them. And some of the departments were buying new computers, while other departments had computers in the closet that weren't being used. One of the things I did was I took possession of all of the computers, integrated the whole thing, and I was able to balance back and forth. That's what I think somebody else has mentioned, that the budget needs a holistic view on the whole thing. Now, one of the things I want to say is strategically, you know, if your doctor tells you that you need to lose 10 pounds, and you say, well, cut off my arm, well, that's, he would label you a hostile patient. If he, if he saw you at all, that's, you know, somebody said that we should close the pool or the, no, that's, that, we don't want to be a hostile patient, but we want to do this thing strategically. Raising the budget, I mean, raising the taxes by any amount is going to hurt the seniors with a, with an undue impact, okay? They generally have a planned budget, so any increase is, is unexpected. Now, seniors are an asset to the, to the city, and I don't know if you're taking that into consideration. Seniors are great volunteers for our boards, seniors are great as, as teachers, substitute teachers, seniors could be council candidates, but maybe you don't want that, anyway. Council candidates, and, and, and also every time a senior stays in the home longer, you're not filling the classrooms with new students, right? So if a senior stays 10 years, that's 10 years that you don't have new kids in the classroom, which also gives the town a, a, a layer of experience to draw from, okay? The other thing that I haven't seen, I don't know if you're doing it, is combined funding. When Summit did the tennis courts at Tatlock, they were a lot of money, I think 600,000, but the Summit Tennis Association put in substantial portion of that, I think it was 200,000. I don't see any partnership funding being proposed. I also don't see any environmental feasibilities for saving on fuel. Are you getting hybrid vehicles? Are you getting EVs? Are you doing something like somebody said on solar panel? What is the fuel system use? What is the fuel use for the city? Who's analyzing that? Is anybody thinking about how to reduce that? I got you this time, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have to say, I agree with the senior housing. We need a lot more senior housing. We want people to stay. New Jersey is one of the states that chases people, our senior citizens out, and so I appreciate that point. Yeah, sorry.
You don't need senior housing, you need seniors to stay in Summit.
Or, or, yeah, just, yeah.
Every time a family moves out the day after high school graduation, we've lost.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Hi, Daniel Sullivan, 33 Crescent. Thank you, Mayor, Council President, members of council. In a year when the Board of Education has a budget increase of 2.956%, and Union County is raising taxes for the first time in a number of years, this would have been a great opportunity for this governing body to show restraint and make it clear to our city administrator and our CFO that they need to figure out a way to come closer to a 1% tax increase this year. Instead, one of the key actions listed on page three of the budget is, quote, "Create and present the 2024 city budget with a municipal tax rate change at or near 2%," close quote. Was there any effort to give the residents some relief by offsetting the increases by the Board of Ed and Union County? You could have chosen to return a portion of the $741,000 to the residents that was the result of the growth of the tax base by the often discussed $81.9 million. This number is an outlier. Recent years, this number has been close to 30 million. There have been even years that we've experienced a downturn, and it seems like there was a windfall to trigger such a massive increase from 34 million all the way up to 81.9 million. So it would have been nice to return a portion of that 741,000, it could have easily been as much as 400,000. I just don't see where it's obvious, where you made any difficult choices. It was not up to Mr. Rogers or Ms. Baldwin to give the residents relief. It was up to you, Council President. To quote Warren Buffett, "Don't ask the barber if you need a haircut." Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment on that. Thank you for your comment, former Councilman Sullivan. I actually looked at the, that same goal that you did about bringing the budget within 2%, and ironically, that's been the same goal for at least the last six years. And I think we could all, literally in every binder, it's the same, if you look in the last six to seven years, the same goal exists. And I will say that I think in committee, we did have a lot of discussions. Councilman Miniger, I think we talked about, I wasn't exactly for the bridges at the golf course. I said, you know what, but when I go back in these binders, guess when the studies were done for them? I think it was when you were on council. So at some point, I have to say, we have to get some things done. And when I look at Director Ozerowski and I ask him, Dave, do you really need those bridges? Well, you know what we do, because I'm worried about the seniors. And I saw that Council, Councilman Sullivan, that you actually were one of the council people who had that study done. So I have to believe that over the years, these are good quality projects. Could we cut them tonight by 450 grand? Maybe, but they've been sitting in these binders since 2021, so I don't know when we're going to get these things done. But I've got to believe in the hard work that you did, and the hard work that Director Schreger does, and all the city employees that were doing the right things. But we had a lot of conversations around cutting things, and we had every opportunity. The K lot, don't do it, I don't care, but the, the cars have two inches in between them. I didn't even know it was in the budget. Take it out. That's very easy, take the K lot out. I didn't even know it was in the budget until two days ago. So we can, we can take out the K lot.
Well, I guess I-
Well, can we, can I just, real quick, so-
Of course.
I think we should, I think a trend that's been happening over the last several council meetings is anytime somebody challenges the new council people, they say, well, that was the, the old guy's fault, right? And we're, you, this council's certainly not obligated to do any, any project that had discussion sometime before your election, right? So really, I think now, five months in, let's take some responsibility for what's happening here. The finance chair, also because Andy was attacked before in a way I don't think was fair. Finance chair sets the tone, the finance committee meetings, right, can request more information from department heads. The council president sets the initial expectation with Michael, the city administrator, about what is acceptable to the council as a whole. I was council president, one of the very first conversations we had about the budget was, please, make this as close to flat as possible, right? And I know we've, I've talked to other council presidents that have had exactly that same conversation too. Some years, it's more possible than other years, right? But, so for a budget with this kind of an increase, I think either that conversation didn't happen between Council President Allen and, and City Administrator Rogers, or the, the conversation was, we're okay with, with an increase of this size. And I think either way, it needs to be explained. So that's, that's the only thing I want to add to this conversation at this point. Thank you.
So I just want to mention, when you say you want to be as close to flat as possible, does 2% increase count? Because that's what the increase was. We had, we got, we had a 2% increase last year, and the total was $206. Our increase this year is 163 on average for a $435,000 home.
Right.
And I didn't finish, I'm sorry. In 2022, it was also 1.98% increase. So I don't know what "flat" means to you, but we did have conversations. No one, no one ever mentioned, Councilman Miniger, I never heard one thing that you said would be a trade-off. Outside of our capital budget, we never had a discussion about what trade-off would be made on our operating budget. You didn't, minus that, when we just, wait, hold on. When we dialogued over the two police and the two hires, you said you were fine with the operating budget, the only thing you were concerned about were the pensionable employees, you didn't want to hire them. And so I thought we made the argument that the, the, you were fine with the police when you came around, and then the facilities manager, and one of them, one of the employees, yes, it's all tax dollars, but went to the sewer utility. So aside from the facilities manager, what do you want to cut? Like, I actually want to have that conversation. What trade-off would you make tonight if you were to get rid of the facilities manager? Because if that's what we're grappling over is the facilities manager, then where are we at, like?
Having the door open to a discussion of cutting makes a huge difference. And I would actually ask Michael Rogers and Tammy Baldwin to sit with us again in a room and decide that. That door was closed. I actually asked him the question, can we, can we request in this committee a 1% increase or a 0% increase? And he said, no, and that's why I got the, it was a very good quote, that's why I remember it, stuck in my brain, the days of sub-2% increases are over. That was, that was real, I mean-
Wait, can I, I know, I just, I'm going to let you, I'm going to let you respond, but I'm going to say this, I, just let me say something. You said council president has authority over this budget. You had a responsibility, Councilman Miniger, to come and tell me, if you heard something that you felt was inappropriate, you should have said to me, I'm being told I can't bring this budget down 0.5%. So I'm going to let, you should have-
You were there, you were in every meeting.
But wait, you never called me to say that you had a problem. No, no, I want, I want-
Administrator Rogers to answer, and then you can-
I just want to respond to the quote that was accrued to me. It was actually in a, in a finance committee, and it came from our CFO. I remember it, I was sitting across from her, and I didn't disagree with that quote, but I, I think we have to understand that it's becoming harder, you need more revenue. I know we always tend to look on the appropriation side, but coming up with other revenue sources is also something we should consider and, and work on. I am not proposing, and I, I'll say it again, the budget as introduced, I hope this council will adopt as is, with no changes.
Council President, through you. So I, I'm going to read this email, because it's, it's-
I don't, hold on.
Yeah.
Council, Mr. Chakobe, he wants to read an email from- What?
From me to every council member, about what I would love to do in the, in the, in the finance committee.
When was this? When was this?
February.
Can you give us the date?
I just have it copied into my notes. So in order to make sure that we can, we meet the goal of 179 pensionable employees, that was my pipe dream, hoping that we could only raise it by two, in our final budget, which is a net increase of two over the current number, we need to do the following things. Tammy, as early as possible, please add a meeting or two to our calendars. I'd love to discuss with Chief Sigorsky the memo with this committee and decide where the two net, the net two additional employees will go. This is when I thought we could, we could probably come to a conclusion that police were the way to go, those two. I can take a day off of work to make these easier to coordinate, so let me know. Michael and Tammy, please let me know by what date you need our final decision on the above. This will determine when we need to meet. Michael and Tammy, in preparation for outcomes of the above discussion, please plan a contingent adjustment to the budget to keep the net increase in pensionable employees to two. Michael, you mentioned that completion of a more robust version of our budget reports needs to happen simultaneously alongside the finalization of the budget, this is February, and you named that as one of the reasons for your concern over the timeline. If needed, please prioritize the finalization of the budget as described in line item above one, with consensus of the, of the finance committee, and make secondary the completion of the robust reports, meaning prepare to use the state-required template if it comes down to that, I don't think it will. Delia and Lisa, please let me know your availability in the next week, including this weekend, so that we may come to the final, final agreement on the capital budget, which we did. That you, that you responded to. Everything before that was my last gasp attempt at trying to reduce the number of employees that we're adding. I mean, it was, it was there, it was, it was part of, part of my job as a council, as, as, yeah, president of the finance committee, as chair of the finance committee. I mean, I, I did, I did what I could.
So, and I'll, one thing is, is if somebody doesn't, I, I, I don't want the emails, we met with you, if you were truly willing, you really wanted to move the dial on this, I don't know why you didn't call and say, Council President, I want to sit down with you and really push you on this. When we spoke, which, by the way, we, we both voted for the BOSE, the Board of School Estimates. So when we talk about the school budget, which gets 52 sets of every dollar, I don't think that it's fair to say that we should steal from our municipal budget so that we can do, you know, a $34 million bond that was, that this previous council voted on last year. You know, I don't, I still think we should fund our municipal employee, employees, so I'm sorry, it's getting late, for 163 on average for a $435,000 assessment. But, you know, if you had just called and said, let's sit down and have a full discussion, so I feel like, I, I hear you, but you could have still called and tried to reach out. I, obviously, when we talked after the BOSE meeting, you said the only thing you had a concern about was the, the facility manager. And never once in the four months, Councilman Miniger, did you say, I want to make a trade-off. Okay, you guys, you want a facility manager, then let's talk trade-offs. That never happened. And so I'm, I'm going to, for this budget, for two years, I've been sitting on this dais. I didn't make it partisan last year, Delia didn't make it partisan. Do I agree with all your choices? Absolutely not. And last year, when you guys had a capital budget of 1.9 million, which I would say that it has to do, if you look back historically, you said in your Facebook Live that you push off capital projects to this year because you couldn't fund them last year.
Yeah.
So, you know, there was no politicization, sorry, we didn't make it political, and I just, I appreciate your frustration, but I also do feel like you could have taken on the responsibility to sit me down and say, I really want your attention on this, and that never happened.
You have the opportunity to put this down tonight.
I'm not going, no, you know what, you should have brought this up sooner. You should have had, you're, it is, you're the chair of finance. If I had a huge problem, I would call you, I would call Councilman Miniger, and I would say, I'm not going to, actually, I have, I, wait, I'm sorry, I will finish with this. I have called you guys to tell you when I'm not voting on something because I was really unhappy about it, and I laid out why. And so for you, and, and because I think that's actually the right thing to do, and as the chair of finance, you could have come to say to me, Councilwoman Allen, I'm not going to vote for this, you know why? Because you're not listening to me. That's to me, a responsibility to our, not to me, actually, to our residents that elected you, that expect you to stand up for them and say something. So it-
We had a great conversation the other night, at the last council, at the last finance meeting. You asked how I felt about it, I was very crystal clear how I felt about this. I said, you know all of the, you know all of the frustrations I have with the whole process, and I, I gave Tammy fair warning that I was going to talk again about the number of employees that we're adding. And I left that meeting thinking that, yeah, I, I offended them again. I made them angry again by bringing up this topic, and, and they, and, and that was how I left the meeting. Although I thought, I thought you hearing me out was a good thing. So I don't know, I don't know if communication is, is what we're lacking. I just think of, I think willingness to move on some of the ideas that I proposed is what's lacking.
Can I bring the conversation to something else?
Yes, what I'd like to finish with this is this. I said to you, can we talk about this? And you go, I'm not going to tell you how I'm voting. I'm like, we're trying to have a conversation here. And so there was never a moment where you said to me, let's have a trade-off. You never said, let's do, well, that's the night, that's the word of the night, that, and the budget, I'm just going to close with this.
I just have a quick question.
Hold on. You go, you already spoke.
Yes, any old question.
No, sir, it's not.
But the one thing is, is that budgets are historical. You cannot say that budgets are not, that they live in just a moment of time. Our budget is based on the past five years, maybe 10 years, and actually, you guys said decades in your Facebook Live. But it, it is from the past to the present, and it is a vision for the future. That's what budgets are. So, you know, I just want to clarify that. Councilman Miniger, you can- Councilman Miniger, you can.
Again, still Greg.
Sorry.
But, but, so I want to make, I want to make another quick joke first. I think you're the only person who watched that Facebook Live, so I'm glad that it's, I'm glad that it's so.
I watched it too.
Oh, all right. Winner, winner. So I'm glad that that's so impactful. Maybe we'll do that again sometime. I don't know. I just want to go back to a couple of things that were said. So nobody here made the suggestion that we should have not approved the schools' requested budget.
Correct.
Nobody, nobody at all.
Say that again.
Nobody here made the suggestion that the schools should not be completely funded at the level that they are. I think everybody's context around those comments have been, since we are investing in the schools in that way, we have a responsibility to take control over the part that we have control over. Then the couple of other things, because everybody has these couple of different municipal budget snapshots, right? And we keep looking at numbers on here. So, so 2023 total property taxes, 206 or 1.1% estimated increase in total tax bill. And then you've got this year, right? You've got this one this year with the yellow. And this one says $163 or 0.9% in total tax bill on average home assessment. So it, it, that is a good number to look at, but it's also not the whole thing, right? We need context to this number, and that's over here on the side where it says 141.7 million total taxes raised last year versus 146.3 million total taxes raised this year, which is a 3.4% difference, right? So that's just a little bit of the context further. And then second is, the differences between last year and this year. The value of the property growth, which is also on this one, 34.7 million last year, 81.9 million this year. 1.3 million dollar increase in debt service last year. We had no choice. Got to just pay it. It's going up. The debt service went down this year. It's a much rosier outlook this year. That's the difference. And then lots of people are looking at these documents, and we've got binders stacked up all over the place, right? But, but last year, it doesn't make sense to look at the budget documents because they are literally, right, a snapshot in time. And the, and the levy is different from what is collected and the budget that is budgeted for changes. We talked about this before. We move money around in the budget throughout the year based on how we need it. So we need to start with this budget this year and look at the actuals from last year. And most people who are involved in business know that that is the way that we have to look at it. So I just wanted to add those few extra things, and I'll stop talking again. Thank you.
Administrator Rogers, would you like to talk about that? I know you've mentioned it. Do you want to talk about the municipal levy that he's referencing?
I don't know how much more I could say about it.
Just want to make sure.
Frankly, I, I truly don't.
Oh, wait, is anyone else?
Lisa?
Oh, Councilman Kowalski?
Yeah, so Andy, I'm, I don't see that email that you referenced.
A little comrosy for you guys.
Okay. Well, so if I got that, that's the only thing that I got. And I, I have to say, I'm surprised that you and Greg are being so critical and it looks like voting against this budget in light of several facts. It's, this budget's derivative of prior budgets. One or both of you were on the Finance Committee for the past several councils, and I believe you're on it together for a time. And although you both voiced some concerns at the last meeting, or when this was introduced on April 2nd, neither of you guys approached me with any concerns save this email. So, you know, it just, it strikes me that if your concerns were severe enough to vote against this, unless you developed them last night, you would have approached me and the other council members to say, hey, we can't vote for this. This thing's not ready for primetime. And you didn't. And so the only conclusion that I can draw is that the positions you're taking here tonight are more about politics than about governance. And, you know, that, that's an approach that the electorate in this town clearly rejects.
I think we really got to stop that. I think we really got to stop characterizing any disagreement up here as you're playing politics, right? We are allowed to have disagreement. I think people like that, right? I, I mean, I think this is going to have a lot of views, this council meeting on YouTube, right? But we got to stop accusing everybody else of if I disagree with you, why are you politicizing?
Is that exactly what I said?
Wait, wait, wait. Uh-uh. No.
You said, based on politics versus governance, right? This is a big document. It's a big thing to think about. And you have to approach this with a lot of thought.
What I said, Greg, what I said, and you know this, is that I would have thought that you would have reached out to some of us and said this instead of ambushing everybody here tonight with your position. That's the politics. It's not the disagreement.
Kevin McGoy, 113 Woodland Avenue. The reason why it's so obviously political, Greg, is this postcard that went out to every resident at Summit that lies, that flat-out lies. Your property taxes are going, this is the largest property tax increase in 10 years. That's a lie. Lacy put this out, okay? It's a lie. This is from the Summit Municipal Democratic Committee. It's a lie. It's scaring people, okay? Now back to the budget. Have you ever, Michael Rogers and Tammy, have, has this ever been political? I mean, I unfortunately was in some of the budget meetings the last couple of years, and not, nobody did anything but sing the praises of the city staff. And that's who Lacy is really attacking, right? So in here, just simple things. What, what's discretionary? What are the discretionary expenses? Andy, you're the Chair of the Finance Committee. Can you please tell me, what are the discretionary expenses that can be eliminated? You want to get rid of this facilities person that's part-time now, I think. What is, did you research? Did you look at other towns that are this size with the assets that we have? Do they have a full-time employee doing that? Have you, have you done any of that work? Greg, you, your concern seems to be a $60,000 expense that you say is on private property. I think most of it's actually the city's property. But I thought in the last meeting, they said there, we have a settlement agreement with these people, that we're legally obligated to pay it. So you're saying, you're advocating for the city to violate a legal settlement that it's already entered into. Like, that seems crazy to me. Because you're just going to wind up costing the city even more because you're going to have to hire lawyers and then lose. You can't violate a legal agreement, and this is $60,000. As far as the cops, the new cops, just, just so you know, the average taxpayer, it's going to cost them $2.70 a month for those two cops. If you say they're $250,000 annually on a run rate basis, do you guys think about this? $2.70, okay? Me, I pay almost twice as much as the average person in taxes, so whatever, five bucks or whatever. That's not even a beer a month, okay? If you could slow down people on my street, I'll give you 20 a month, okay? You laugh about it, but simple question. How many times have you seen people pulled over on residential streets? How many times have you seen cars flying by you? We don't have enough cops. Two's not even enough. So if you're saying you need trade-offs, by the way, the trade-off seemed to be, I thought you said the trade-off was, 70% of the overtime budget would be reduced by the new, two new cops. That's a trade-off. What do you need to trade? What's the net? I mean, the politics need to stop. You guys are like being absurdly ridiculous. It's disgusting.
Thank you.
Can we, can we just talk about other towns for a second? Because Kevin brought up other towns, so I just want to address that. So Westfield, a very, very similar sized budget, 0% increase this year. New Providence, added staff, including growing their police force, 0.89% increase this year.
Sorry, are we allowed to have comments from the audience? It's interrupting a council.
Chatham Township is flat. Chatham Borough is a small increase. Mendham Township is flat. This can be done, other places. This can be done. I'm glad that was brought up. Thank you.
Just really quick, we're talking about fairness. He's been up here twice now, and both times, he's talked about the same thing during the non-comment portion and now the comment portion for the budget. So if we're going to be fair, that's how that should work in the future.
It's not true.
Zip it.
Name and address.
Summit High School.
Name and address.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Appreciate that. Monique Taylor, 167 Passaic Avenue. Summit High School recently dropped to 29 from 23 last year in the U.S. News and World Report rankings. Enrichment and tutoring sessions, a dedicated teen center, and programming at the Y and the Connection for middle and high school students are a few of the myriad of solutions if we only had the funding. The Maybee Playground, which I've heard no one talk about tonight, but it's right in the middle of our downtown. That renewal is scheduled to break ground in the fall of 2024 and open in the spring of 2025. The cost to complete is approximately 1.5 to 1.7 million, and I would argue far more important to the overall well-being of our children. But we are entertaining hiring two new police officers, both of whose salaries, benefits, and insurance would cost four times as much over the course of their careers. Because as everyone knows, no one who's hired here is leaving in 10 years. They're probably going to retire in '25. 2025 funding for Summit's inclusion and diversity celebrations like AAPI, Pride, Juneteenth, and Hispanic Heritage is being slashed because the trust isn't being replenished, but one of the wealthiest towns in Union County cries poor for anything but law enforcement. Who will do what? Fight a manufactured crime wave of auto theft meant to sow fear and paranoia? Meanwhile, Council President Allen drags her feet on changes to language of the ordinance, the Resident Protection Ordinance, which makes many of us still feel unsafe. I submit to you that we have truly lost our way when we are focused on material possessions of the well-heeled few by foolishly spending monies on more police, which in no way, shape, or form enhances the lives of our children. And I have just one other question, and that is, I believe, didn't we just hire two new police officers last year?
No.
Or the year before that? No, there were, there was, there was a job posting and listing for a police officer, probationary, probationary officer. No?
There are replacements for officers that were retiring.
Thank you.
Can I have your statement, Ms. Taylor?
I'll.
Chief Sigorsky, how long have we been at 47 officers?
Almost a decade, I think, you're telling me.
About, about seven years, and we were at 46 before that for a long time.
Okay. And then two of them are actually not able, they don't go on patrol, correct? So you have 40, you have 45 active police officers. Is that true?
No, right now, we have, we have 47.
Okay, but Mike Freeman, does he?
He, we don't count him in the, in that number because of his salary is reimbursed by the state PVA.
Got it. Okay, all right. Thank you. Come in. Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle, hold on one second. I just wanted to ask if anybody, Councilwoman, if you want to talk about the grants, because I think that has to do with cutting the, the programs at the community's programs. Do you know?
I was actually going to ask, we've talked about this before. Michael, have there been any cuts in the, the programming? I have not heard of anything.
First of all, those programs are funded by trust monies in the Recreation Trust. But Mark, I know, I'm not sure with the, if there anything within that program, if you want to just come up, Mark, and just.
The new council president? So this year, we decided to give $2,000 out of the trust to every special event across the board.
Is that typical?
No. This is the first time we've done that. We want to be fair to every group, and then additional monies have to be raised by the organizations.
And every year, do we normally just raise money? It's usually a.
It's a combo.
Okay, okay.
I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Director Ozerowski, Councilwoman Smallwood, were you informed of this?
Of what?
Taking the money down in the trust for, from five, we used to give every.
There was never a set number.
Okay.
It was always based on the, what the program was, what, you know, if there was going to be something at the Village Green, I think David and Mark always determined.
So now we have a set amount.
Consistent across the board.
Okay, got it. I was just asking.
It was all based on what, what money they had in the general fund.
Okay.
That they would determine how much they would spend.
I just couldn't remember when I was Chair. I can't remember how we, because David did it also, I don't remember.
I got a, I'm sorry, I got a, I'm, I like the idea of what we did this year, the 2,000, because it was a, it was a transition year from what it was done last year into what next year, I think is a perfect division among all the monies raised this year in donations. So it does have the potential to be higher, but the money has not been, has not been, the donations have not been coming in that way. That said, go to, go to the website, go to the community programs website and donate to these. Absolutely.
Thanks, Andy.
Wait, can you guys speak up, just so can everybody hear?
I see what he's saying.
Okay.
It has the potential to be lower next year, which is what I'm saying. And I think we should, we should make an effort, if we want to, if we want to keep this, we want to codify 2,000 a year, then we should consider doing something now.
Okay.
Or at the end of next year, at the end of this year.
How much is in the trust?
Council President.
Hold on one second.
We, we did get a grant for Maybee Playhouse, uh, Maybee Playground, right?
Yeah. Yes.
So real quick, that's one of the things that you won't see in tonight's budget. We were awarded a $750,000 grant for Maybee Playground. However, we won't receive that in this because it's going to be, if it's adopted tonight, and then we'll do a, what is it, Chapter 159 Amendment, Michael, when we receive the money. I'm getting so good at these terms.
I know. Good. Well, and I was going to say, so it originally was earmarked for 1.1 million, but it's now at 1.7, right? Is that?
What is it? 1.6.
But the original, when it was originally budgeted for, it was 1.1.
It was probably higher, but we have all the funds needed.
Okay. And the one thing I just want to say about the grants, and Administrator Rogers, you can jump in, but the grants last year, when you look at the budget, was 500 and something thousand dollars last year. It's because they had that money in hand from 2022. So that.
So the way, what you'll see in any introduced budget is what we've been awarded right up until we finalize the budget. So last year, I think it was actually 656,000. This year is only 137. It, it doesn't mean we haven't received grant awards over the last month or so, which we have significantly. And then what happens is after the budget's adopted, you start to see resolutions, what we call Chapter 159. And it's just, it's granting the authorization to actually spend that money when the budget is already adopted, so. I mean, last year, we but, we had in the budget 656, and we wound up realizing 2.1 million dollars in grants.
Great, okay.
Michelle Cowmanson, 67 Butler Parkway. Goal number one in the 2024 municipal goals and objectives is enhance the financial position of the municipality through strategic budgeting, prudent debt management, and the development of long-term financial sustainability objectives. of long-term financial sustainability objectives. While the council says they want to maintain long-term financial sustainability, the actual plan doesn't achieve that. The 2025 budget has 1.64 million dollars set aside for lights at Tatlock. The stadium lights at Tatlock are a want, not a need. It is fiscally irresponsible to spend 1.64 million dollars of taxpayer money on a want. Even if the lights are partially funded by private donors, taxpayers will still be burdened with the annual operating costs, which we estimate to be around $60,000 per year. Summit will have a brand-new turf field at the high school this fall to add to their field ecosystem. A fiscally responsible council will cancel this project and focus their attention on the real work that needs to be done, like meeting our affordable housing obligations.
Thank you. One thing that caught my attention, Councilwoman Vartan, you mentioned that we can move money around in the budget whenever we choose to. What did you mean by that?
Well, if we have flexibility, right, if we, like, for example, last year, we moved $30,000 from the DCS Roads unit to police overtime, right? Like, that's, that's something that can happen at certain points throughout the year if it's necessary, right? But it requires a vote of council to do that.
The only transfers that can be made in any respective budget year is November and December.
That's what I mean.
Right.
We do that a lot in November and December.
We can't move funds throughout the year. It's only at that point can we start to transfer.
Okay. Throughout the year, November, December. I got you. I got you. But we do transfers a lot, is the point.
We do, at the end, and then even into 2025 or the 2024 budget, we can for the first three months.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Are we going to close our public hearing on the budget? Okay.
I think she has one more.
You have one more.
Oh, sure, sure.
I'm Lucy Cottar, 123 Summit Avenue. I'll be brief. I had no intention of speaking specifically to the budget, but because I was brought up, this is not the first time Mr. McGoy has targeted me. He has come out and talked about my place of employment on, and as if it were some sort of topic of discussion. He's making claims that I'm lying to the public or that I am beginning some sort of political warfare that hasn't happened in the past. So let's be clear, the chair of the Republican Party has always sent out these sort of, maybe not a postcard, but talked about the budget, talked about it. That's what we do. I'm the chair of the Summit Democrats. That's what I do. I do not appreciate the targeting from Mr. McGoy. It happens not just to me, it happens to people up there, and it happens to people out in the world, and I would like to see the support of the elected officials to shut that down. We are all members, like, this is the dialogue. You guys are raising taxes. This is what we do. We talk about it. And we get out there and we tell people how we feel about it. But Mr. McGoy and his talking about where I work and talking about me and a lot of his free time and a lot of places on social media, and if you think I don't see it, and I know you all see it too, you should shut it down. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Okay. I just want to, as I'm closing out, if there's any final comments from our council, I, I would say that, again, I don't like raising taxes. I don't want anyone to, you know, have more expenses on them. This is a responsible budget of 2%. It's $163 on average for a house for $435,000 assessment. I don't want that. It's the same, if you look at the budgets passed, the last three years, they're all at 2%. That doesn't make it right or wrong. It just means that we are looking to be responsible, and at the end of the day, we have to maintain the services for this community. We want you to have the phone answered when you want a dog license, when you go to the clerk, when you want your permits to build, which is a division that's exploding. We want our buildings to not fall apart around us. I think these are investments, and I believe in investing in people, I believe in investing in infrastructure, because if we don't continue to do it and we keep our capital budgets at 2 million, before you know it, we're just kicking the can down the road. And if you look at the, the trend of the capital budgets, I couldn't find it, I was going to try to get it for you, but in one of the capital budget presentations, the trend was, a few years ago, that if we'd stayed on track, our capital budget would have been at $8 million this year. But it isn't. It's at 4. And there's probably always a trade-off that we could do, or a trade-off that we could make. My trade-off this year was to take care of our employees. And Councilwoman Miniger, you know, if, this is a lesson in terms of, if there's a communication gap between us, I will work on it. You know, when I took this role, I met with you and, and Councilwoman Vartan, and I've said to you, I want you to feel as though whatever you are working on, you feel valuable, and that you're getting something out of this year. It is your free time on top of your job, and I don't want you to be unfulfilled because you are serving your community. So I just, on record, you know, I want to continue to open up that door for communication. If there's any other council member, Councilwoman Smallwood?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. I, I did want to address the K lot, since it was, sorry, it's parking, it's, it's important to me. Councilwoman Vartan, you had mentioned you were not supportive of the restriping of the K. I was just curious, is it because of the cost or the anticipated loss of revenue?
Yes. Yes, it's because of everything. It's because we're going to pay more money to get less parking spaces. I would rather just put the money in a fund to teach people how to park better.
Okay.
How's that?
We actually had Director Schager's team go out there and measure the, the striping, and it is not the same size lot or spaces as our other lots. They're actually a foot shorter in terms of width. So in terms of cost, it's looking at $25,000, right? But in terms of lost revenue, we wouldn't have lost revenue since 2019, which was the last time that lot was completely 100% full. The last time that it actually had 20 available spaces was in February of 2020. This year alone, in January, we've averaged 56 available spaces. February, we averaged 47 available spaces. In March, we've averaged, averaged 46 available spaces. So we're not utilizing that lot, and it could be for a very number of reasons. One is, I think the main reason, is we do have larger cars. When a, when a Tahoe or, you know, a large SUV parks into one of those spots and it goes over the line, another car cannot park in there. So we're losing that space no matter what. By restriping this lot, you know, it's going to make it consistent with our other lots, and I honestly believe that, you know, we're not going to be losing the revenue based on the numbers that I've seen over the last four years of the average open spaces in that lot. So if it's, you know, if it's the cost, $25,000, you know, maybe we can consider raising parking prices, I don't know. But I, I think it's, this is something that needs to be done. It's, it's not just a convenience thing. It's, it needs to be, it needs to, needs to represent the exact same lots that we have in, in the other parts of our town. I believe Erin Schager, Director Schager, I mean, I believe our other lots are pretty much uniform, except for this one particular lot. Is that correct?
Through you, Council President, I can't speak to all the lots. We are doing an audit on them actively just to, to verify, but at least the ones that have been redone, the, the typical space in some is nine feet by 18 feet, and the ones at the K lot are currently eight feet by 18 feet. So they are one foot more narrow than, than standard and than what exists, at least in the parking services lots that have been redone in the last five years.
And also, by the, I'm sorry, I also spoke with Chief Evers, and hopefully, I believe, in July, maybe, we're going to be gaining 45 to 50, we're going to be gaining back 45 to 50 spaces in the Broad Street East lot. So that will help, help make up for any lost revenue, which are typically non-resident parking charged at $14 a day.
We couldn't squeeze any more out.
I, what I, was I, I mean, if anybody had money on midnight, it's blown anyway, right? So, so I could just respond real quick. So I think we drive the same car. So I feel okay with my car in those spaces. I, I notice, I do notice that they're smaller, but you know, you just, you take a second, you take an extra second, you slow down a little bit. My bet would be that people don't park there because it's behind the CVS and it's a little bit of a walk from the downtown, right? Like, we don't actually have a parking issue, we have a walking issue, right? That people don't really want to, you know, take the trek. But I don't know if the, I, the, the argument sounded like we should invest in it because it's underutilized, and I don't think that we should do that either. So, but, you know, this is too late to be talking about parking, probably.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, but the, the act, if you're talking about the K lot, up until 2017, 18, 19, it was 100% full.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, it's not now.
Right.
So we're not losing spaces in terms of the actual parking.
But do we think it's because the spaces are too small?
Yes, I believe that's part of it.
Okay. Well, you know, I mean, this is my, I mean, I have this, this is my position on this, that we should not be spending money on that.
We don't, we don't.
I think we've been over it. I think we've been over it.
We don't have to, we don't have to do this project, right? It's just because it's on here doesn't mean we have to do it. How many projects did we do in 2023?
Yeah, I mean.
I'll just jump in at this. Capital budget, when, even if you adopt everything in the capital budget, which I hope you do, it's not funded. You have to come back with a bond, a bond ordinance to authorize money to then, for us to go out and actually finance the capital budget. So there's a couple more steps. Even if it's funded, you still have to approve the project at some point. So there's multiple steps. And then there are many projects in past years that were funded, even sometimes authorized, and you don't move ahead with doing the project, or you don't spend as much, and it gets canceled and lapses into your capital fund balance. So you really don't have to do this project, there's still time to make that determination.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because you actually transfer capital surplus.
But the, the capital budget is not funded, so you're not actually.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, you good?
Good.
Anyone else? It's getting late, we still have more to do. Okay. Councilwoman Miniger? All right. So we're going to move on to the 20.
Close the hearing?
Oh, I'd like to close the hearing and open up the hearing for 20, the 2024 Special Improvement. No?
Ask Councilmember Miniger to open the hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Motion and a second.
Yep.
Are we voting on the budget?
You need to.
Sure.
Introduce the, yeah.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 411, sorry, one second. This is number 41110, and this is the hearing on the 2024 Special Improvement District Budget. The Special Improvement District is better known as Summit Downtown. Taxes levied from Summit's retail businesses district are managed by Summit Downtown Incorporated, SDI. SDI's budget is used to promote downtown businesses. I move to adopt this resolu, oh, sorry, that's the wrong phrase. I move to open this hearing.
May we have a second?
Second.
Good evening, all. My name is Bill Robb. I'm the treasurer of Summit Downtown, Inc. I know it's been a long evening, I'll try and be quick going through my remarks. You should have before you a copy of 2024 SDI budget narrative, as well as a copy of the budget overview. So just a couple comments with regard to the budget. This is a statutory requirement that Summit as a municipality needs to approve the Special Improvement District each year. It is worth noting, there's no municipal contribution from the general taxes to SDI. The budget, as it sits before you, has been determined by a board representative of business and property owners, two council members, and the mayor. That budget that you have before you was approved by the Board of SDI in February. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, noting, as I mentioned, that a few of you were part of the budget approval process. I don't know whether or not you wish for me to go through the budget on a line-by-line basis, that's up to the council. Basically, in, income and expenses for next year are 501,960.50. The majority of the income items comes from assessments of the businesses in town, or property owners in town and businesses. Entry fees, which is the farmer's market, and grants from Main Street, New Jersey, and the Department of Community Affairs, Affairs, which I believe is part of the CARES Act. Just a couple comments. We just closed out a very successful year. Our fiscal year is the calendar year. The surplus that we had was due primarily to the application and receipt of grants, including those which were spent in 2022. Our plan for 2024 is to enhance our existing events. The marquee events are Design Week, Art and Cars, Downtown Music, also known as Summit Street Sounds. We plan to add an additional location for Summit Street Sounds. We have expanded our partnership with Piotta's Autobody for Art and Cars, and are going to get some help from them to enhance the marketing of the show. We also have some new artists and bands. We do have increased expenses this year, they're reflective of the needs of running a professional organization. I think you all are probably pretty familiar with budgets and costs after the discussion we've just had. Primarily increased salaries, which recognize the contributions of our staff, whose compensation has historically been in the lower or middle of the range for professionals of their caliber across New Jersey, plus some money for accounting fees. SDI has accumulated some surplus over the years, which typically is earmarked for capital projects, and anticipates using a portion of, of it for some or all of the following projects in conjunction with the City of Summit. One would be a permanent fence around the Park and Chop Lot that encircles the farmer's market if council approves. Two would be to contribute to the repair and repaving of the alley connecting Bank Street and Summit Avenue if DPW moves forward with that project. Three, which is probably like touching the third rail, is depending on the decision regarding the closure of Maple Street on a seasonal basis, SDI is in a position to help with beautification and other amenities such as tables, chairs.
Can I give you to pause for one second?
Sure.
Chief, can you, can you please have the. Okay, go ahead, sorry about that.
Sorry, so if, if Maple Street ends up being closed at any point during the year, we're in a position to help with the beautification of public amenities such as tables, chairs.
I'm so sorry. Can you shut the door for these things? So sorry.
It's okay.
Good.
Tables, chairs, planters, and games. And then the other item of importance, which we talk about a lot, for those of you who've been to SDI meetings, is to increase money or funding for public planting, such as the tree wells and other areas around downtown.
Great. We like the tree wells to be cleaned up.
So I submit the budget for your approval.
Excellent. Are there any council comments? Go ahead.
When you come to do this next year, would you prefer to do it before the municipal budget?
I feel like I've learned an incredible amount this evening. And I have definitely become a more patient person.
Any other council comments?
I do. Thank you very much for presenting this. I, I think I mentioned this, that in our February meeting, when, when I was on SDI years ago, our auditor highly suggested that we didn't keep more than $100,000 in cash on hand. I know that the auditor has since changed over. Have they given you any guidance on how much cash should be held?
They have not.
Okay.
But again, you know, some of the, the cash sits, you know, ready for deployment based on some of the things I just mentioned.
My concern is, you know, this is, this is a tax to our, to our downtown property owners. And, you know, if, I, I'm just thinking, if I were a downtown property owner and saw that there's a fairly sizable budget for Summit Downtown, Inc., but yet you're increasing my, my tax.
It, it's worth mentioning that we're not increasing the tax. The assessment was held flat.
So I, so I would suggest maybe reducing my tax, right? If we have X amount of cash on hand to fund these projects? Because I think this budget is significantly higher than it was probably five years ago.
Well, remember, part of that surplus did not come from the assessment, it came from grants received.
Correct.
So.
I would also suggest, in terms of tree wells, because I know for SDI, tree wells and parking are the number, number one and two topics.
Don't forget the fence.
Oh. You know, I, I always felt like, you know, our job as Summit Downtown, Inc. was to put a thousand people on, on our, on, on the sidewalks, and it's the store owner's job to get them into their store, to get them to buy things. The other part is beautification of our downtown. I, I think if we could, you know, put some resources towards our tree wells, as well as even think about hiring a part-time person to help pick up the trash that is continuously flying around our downtown. I know that we've talked about a lot about employees tonight, and, you know, the DBW does what they can with what they have. But I think if we can, you know, discuss further on SDI, potentially hire someone on a part-time basis to help with just the, the trash that, you know, the pizza boxes that go into the, the tree wells, the trash that flies around, even if it's only, you know, two or three days a week, it would help tremendously.
I mean, I think that's certainly a discussion worth entertaining, and obviously, the question being, you know, how that expense should be borne. how that expense should be borne.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, real quick, it's not a question, it's just a comment. Downtown retail occupancy, 99%. Bringing in all sorts of grants. Great job. Keep it up. I'm supportive.
Excellent.
One, one very quick question. Do you, um, do you have a plan for murals and public art every time you have that in your budget? At the beginning of every year, I mean?
I think that there has been. I, you know, I'd have to look into that. I, I believe so, but I know that one of the murals that's under discussion in town over by Harquell is not related to us.
Okay.
Great.
Just a quick comment. My, my last comment, thank you for coming and thank you for all you do.
You're welcome.
My only comment would be last year when I was Chair of Parking and Community Programs, Councilman Smallwood, we talked about just taking a closer look at the parking fees that, for the events and parking, just making sure that we're getting the right amounts. I think we had some concerns it was a little bit light. I don't know if it is, I haven't looked at it, but you might just want to get together and make sure all the events and parking numbers are all set up.
Yeah, definitely happy to engage in that discussion.
I haven't looked, I'm blessed, but thank you for everything.
Thank you so much. Sorry to keep you so late. All right, we're gonna close.
Do I need to wait and, do you guys have to vote on it, I guess?
We are gonna vote, but does he have to wait?
Oh, I, I can.
It shouldn't be that long.
Absolutely.
It shouldn't be that long now.
Can we do it out of order?
Thanks very much.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a great idea. We're gonna do it out of order, yeah. So we'll do it now. So we'll close the hearing. Councilman Miniger?
Thank you, Council President. Having just had the hearing on the resolution for the SDI budget, I move for a final vote.
Excellent. Council comments? Oh, no. Just a roll call. Oh, yeah.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Are you doing council comments?
Or do we? Do we? Yeah, do we have any council comments? Public comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulaski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Councilman Miniger?
Thank you, Council President. Having, just moments ago, had the hearing for the municipal budget, sewer and parking, I moved the, for the final vote.
So moved.
Excellent. Council comments? Public comments? Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Nay.
Mr. Pulaski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Nay.
President Allen?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we're gonna go, we're gonna vote on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
First, we need a, yeah, okay, motion, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any council comments? Okay, public comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. I would say that council member comments, we can probably. Yeah, forego.
Something's just not sitting right with me, Council President. We just, we just saw a member of the audience aggressively follow somebody outside and start arguing with them to the extent that the chief of police needed to go and get involved in it. And I think everybody up here needs to just be very clear that people, we talk a lot about safety here. You need to feel safe.
Okay, great.
Coming here, Kevin, stop. You need to feel safe coming here. You need to feel safe coming here. You cannot be threatening and menacing people.
I didn't threaten anybody, no, you just said I threatened, I didn't threaten anybody. No, stop.
I'm saying, we need to agree that this is not acceptable behavior.
Greg, you just said I threatened somebody.
Yeah, I agree, I also think we don't have time for a second public comment from people. We made that decision earlier in this, earlier in this meeting, that we can't allow people to have a second public comment.
Sir, there's no way.
This is a time to just keep these rules going.
Guys, guys.
This is actually, yeah, the third.
Kevin, please.
Time.
First of all, I watched her approach him. So she was talking to him. I don't know what happened, I just asked for them to go out.
Well, I can say something, I was out at the bathroom, after six hours, I couldn't. And when I was out there, there was nothing. There was a police officer, there was the gentleman who was a former firefighter, which were going. There was nothing, there was no commotion out there when I was out there. And I had just come out of the bathroom, so I didn't see anything that caused me any alarm. And if I did, I would, I would, I would have involved, so I didn't see anything alarming whatsoever.
All right.
Comments from the audience are gonna be shot down, I'm saying. Any, any comments from the audience? I'm actually going to prevent you from doing that.
Kevin, Kevin.
Stop talking from the audience, please.
Stop, 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 stop. Both of you, stop, please. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion carries.
Can we take a vote?
All in favor?
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, sorry.